Good evening, Vacaville. This is the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, August 22, 2023. Can I have a roll call?
Council Agency Authority members Stockton, Ritchie,
Here.
Silva,
Here.
Chapman, Roberts, Vice Mayor Vice Chair Wiley.
Here.
Mayor Chair Carley.
Here. Will you please rise with me and we'll have a moment of silence? You lead us in the plat.
Let's raise your hands to the floor. And to the public, the which is saying, one nation under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice for all.
Yes, thank you. All right. We have the, an approval for the agenda. Any changes?
No, there are none.
All right.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. And we're going to have to do everything in roll call tonight since Vice Mayor Wiley is remote.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes.
Silva.
Yes.
Chapman. Roberts.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Carley.
Yes. And we'll have to do that through, through the remainder of the night since Vice Mayor is remote. And with that, approval of the minutes. Do you have a motion?
And approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, we're going to have to do the roll call. Have to catch myself. We're going to get busy over there.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Ritchie.
Yes.
Mayor Carley.
Yes. And seeing no presentations tonight, we will move to the consent calendar. Is there any member of the council or the public wishing to pull an item for discussion tonight? Seeing none, I do have a statement that I do need to read. It's recusal for item 6B. Myself, tonight, I'm recusing myself from participating in the consent calendar, Agenda Item 6B, entitled Resolution Establishing Speed Limits on Various City Streets Based on the 2023 Engineering and Traffic Survey, only as to setting the speed limit for Whispering Ridge Drive. I may have a real property conflict of interest in setting the speed for Whispering Ridge Drive because my personal residence is within 500 feet of a portion of that street. I've been advised, I've been informed by the city attorney that because the Agenda Item 6B is a consent calendar item, I can remain in the room during the vote on that item. And for clarity, I request that the motion be segmented Agenda Item 6B into two votes, one vote regarding the speed limit for all streets in this report, except Whispering Ridge Drive, to be considered with the remainder of the consent calendar, and two, a separate vote regarding the speed limit for Whispering Ridge Drive. So with that, we will split it into two. The first one will be consent calendar items A through I, except for the separated vote, which we will take separate. Do I have, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve 6A, I minus item 6B.
We have a motion and a second. But a roll call.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Mayor Carley.
Yes. With that, we will then move to the second one. I'll preside, I'll preside over it, I just won't vote on it. So we have a motion.
Motion to approve 6, Whispering Drive for item 6B.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman. Mayor Carley.
I'm recused from this vote.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine. We made that official. I understood, I understood what needed to happen there, so we got that right. Thank you for making sure that that was done properly. It's important that we make sure that we recuse ourselves if, if we have an interest in an item. So appreciate the city attorney making that happen and taking care of us, making sure that we don't get ourselves into any trouble in doing so. So with that, we're going to move on to Item 7, Business from the Floor. This is the time when members of the community can address the council on items not on the agenda, but within the, the purview and jurisdiction of this council. So please come forward.
Mayor Wiley, remote. Councilmembers, staff. My name is Raleigh Galligan. I've been a member or citizen of Vacaville for 45 years. In 2014, out of a growing need and our compassion for Vacaville homeless, we began to look for solutions. We were inspired and we were educated and coached at the Vacaville Homeless Roundtable under then Chief Carley's leadership. We really appreciated that. We prayed for wisdom and sought counsel. We organized, engaged, recruited, and trained 24 volunteers that we call navigators, under the banner of There's a Better Way Vacaville. We created resources. Everyone got a notebook this big with all the paper resources from the city, county, nonprofits, and the faith community. We also gave them e-copies on their notes, and then they got a name tag like this. We collaborated through the Homeless Roundtable with crew and Vacaville City Departments, Solano County A.D., there's a better way, a hand up and not a handout. We know how to do it. We've done it with collaborative efforts. We need the city of Vacaville to reengage with the volunteers as collaborative partners. We need your leadership. So I'm asking you to consider, to take steps and action. You'll hear more reasons why. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Pat Dennis, and we've lived in Vacaville for 25 years, and we love being here. And I've been involved with many organizations over the years, of volunteer organizations, but at the present time, it's homeless that I'm with now. And Vacaville has many resources for food and the homeless and the less fortunate. The churches do a yeoman's job of feeding the poor and the homeless. My reason for being here this evening is to advocate for a permanent cooling and warming center. Vacaville has an excellent building on Elmira and Peabody, the old Greyhound bus station. This is a central location with easy access. I've been a volunteer for North Bay Healthcare since 2001, and I'd just like to share a little bit of information about the cost of healthcare, which is involved with our homeless and our less fortunate. The cost of charity care was $7 million. Medi-Cal, $52 million. Medicare, $156 million. The cost of services provided to the poor and the underserved in 2022 was $216 million. In 2022, programs and services that help the limited financial resources were sustained despite recovering from the global pandemic. I'm sure many businesses have, has suffered the same. If these people had a place to go to be warm and cool, I'm sure the hospitals would not be used so much for primary care. Would be, we would be grateful if the council would place this issue on the agenda for September to address a permanent and cooling center, and this could be really a win-win for everybody, and you can help us to do something for the less fortunate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Helen Williams. I have been a resident, Vacaville resident for 33 years. I have been married for 46 years, and I have raised three children here in Vacaville. I am a member of Shiloh Baptist Church here in Vacaville, and I am part of the Giving Well Food Ministry at the church. Our Giving Well model comes from Acts 2035. It is more blessed to give than to receive. It is with this thought that our ministry prepares bags of food that we administer to those in need every Tuesday from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It is also with this spirit that we participate in the Thursday evening meals for the homeless and/or the hungry people here in Vacaville. Because of my involvement with our church ministry, I do get to interact with some of the people who are homeless and less fortunate. Most of these interactions have been positive. Sometimes they just need to know that there are people that care and they're not being judged. As a Christian, I am reminded of the parable of the good Samaritan. All of us should be challenged to be attentive to those who need our help, whether they have been wounded by violence, misfortune, or poverty. This requires us to love our neighbor as we love ourselves. Poverty, social injustice, and homelessness are, are real problems. They have always been real problems, and as a Christian, I believe that we can't continue to say that is someone else's problem. I believe that as a community, we listen to each other and come up with real solutions to help those in need. If that means the city of Vacaville consider opening up more cooling centers in the summer and warming centers in the winter to help a very vulnerable population of, of human beings in the city of Vacaville, then my request is for that to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Gail Thompson, and I have been a navigator under the leadership of Raleigh Galligan for approximately seven years. In that seven years, we have fed, we have clothed, we have assisted for doctor's appointments and medical treatments, we have taken them to appointments to secure their SSDI, we've taken them appointments for their SSI, whether those are appointments are in San Rafael or Vallejo. These people that receive their benefits, many of them go on into housing. We have housed permanently members of this community that had been homeless. It's an important part of solving the homeless problem. It's not a problem that's going to go away. We're fortunate that we are where Vallejo and Fairfield was years ago, but we're not immune to the growing population of homeless. I see it every week. I deliver home meals to those that can't get in, those that have gout or are going through chemo and living on the streets. These people get their meals delivered to them. We cannot keep thinking it's somebody else's problem. This community is so generous, and with the cooperation of the city and those willing to volunteer and work on this issue, we can solve homelessness in Vacaville, not hide it, not turn our backs on it, but actually solve it. Last year, we lost seven members of this community dying on the streets. So far this year, we have lost five members of our community dying on the streets. These were somebody's brother, mother, father. We cannot continue to allow our community to let these people die in such an inhumane way. You see on the nightly news, well, it's going to get cold tonight, folks. Cover your plants and bring your pets in. And yet we're letting these people die on the street. Vacaville has great resources. We have an outstanding crew through the police department that serve these population, and we have churches and communities that are willing to serve these populations. So I am hoping that this council can see its way through to providing a warming and cooling center so not another death happens in the streets of Vacaville. That's a horrible thing for a city that's rated so highly to have on their sheet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Warren. I've been a resident here for 45 years from San Francisco. I love Vacaville. I mean, I raised my children here. I do everything I can to help make Vacaville a fabulous city. Our homeless is such a problem, a problem that affects all of us. We provide them with clothes, we provide them with food, but the one thing we're missing is the hygiene, and you can't live like that. It's, it's so very sad that they can get a job, but they can't keep it because obviously they don't have the hygiene, and we can solve that. We have a wonderful city here that we live in. I don't think there's anything more we could ask for a great city to raise our kids. I have eight grandchildren. When they come and visit me, they go, Grandma, why do you still live here? The homeless are on the streets. We're afraid for you. And I go, honey, we're working on it, okay? And we are working on it, and I compliment all of you for what's happening in Vacaville. We just were nominated as the 10, top 10 in the small town cities in the U.S. What an accomplishment. I mean, it thrilled me. It has to make you guys all just be, you know, elated. So what we can do with a warming and cooling center will just bring so much to help solve our homeless situation. I really hope we can be a part of that. I hope that we can be on your meeting agenda next month, and we're here to support you all and to support our homeless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Skip Thompson. As you've heard, this is a community that is ready, willing, and able to assist this council. But this council needs, so does the leadership. We, you were elected for a variety of reasons, and I think leadership was one of them. So we need you to start the process. And when I say start the process, I was at a county board of supervisors meeting where $10.2 million was awarded to Vallejo and Fairfield, 287 came to Vacaville. But why did they get millions of dollars? Because they were ready. They had projects in the queue. I see on Cap Solano's agenda this Thursday, Fairfield for their small or tiny shelter pound home is getting another $220,000. Vacaville needs to be ready, and I think you've heard from my, my friends and my colleagues that we're really willing to help, but we need this council to start the process. In front of mine's, an old friend of mine, he's not here anymore, said to me, you know, Skip, the hardest thing in doing anything is getting started. So we're here tonight to ask you to get started, get started on the discussion of a cooling and warming center. I might remind you that we started about eight months ago when we came here as a group and said, it's awfully cold and wet, the coldest and wettest winter we'd had in recent times. Here we are, eight months later, and we're still asking you to agendize something. So I'm going to stand here and I'm going to ask this council to direct the city manager to agendize in the next couple of months, the, the issue of the cooling and warming center. And at the end of the day, should you choose not to support us in our effort, well, that is your prerogative and you have good reasons for it, but I think we'll be able to come here and show you why you need to support that. And to follow up on Gail's comments about the deaths, we have waited eight months and five deaths later for you to act. So I'm asking you today to direct the city manager to agendize the cooling and warming center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two months ago, on June 27, I asked this council to allow the Christian flag to be flown on the city flag pole at Andrews Park in order for Vacaville's Christian community to be given an equal treatment to the public forum created by this council when it allowed the LGBTQ plus community to fly the rainbow flag for the entire month of June. To date, this council has refused to even consider my request to honor Christian constitutional rights. With my request to fly the flag was a specifically worded proclamation stating historic Christianity's views on human sexuality. This proclamation was in response to the LGBTQ plus's persistent revelations regarding their sexual views. To fly an organization's flag is to acknowledge its acceptance of inclusiveness into Vacaville's life, of the group's activities and beliefs. One of the beliefs and goals of the LGBTQ plus community is as follows. From the 1972 Gay Rights Platform, created at the National Coalition of Gay Organizations held in Chicago, to my knowledge, nothing has ever been rescinded from this document. On the state level, item number seven. Repeal of all laws governing the age of sexual consent. All laws is inclusive of child, adult, sexual, physical interaction. Any adult who would engage in this abomination should be, would be immune from prosecution because where there is no codified law, there is legally no crime committed. Christians, however, have a different review, or excuse me, different viewpoint toward youngsters. Jesus Christ said in Luke 1712 that severe punishment would be given to a person should he offend one of these little ones. It's appalling that the city would commemorate the gay pride flag and what it stands for, yet spurned the desire of Vacaville Christians to stand up for protecting children by allowing Christ banner to wave, to wave. Please enter this statement into the public record dated 8/22/23.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'd like to speak to you tonight about pride. It's interesting that a special interest group has adopted the most egregious sin identified by God, that of pride. It's interesting that the symbol of God's covenant with humanity, the rainbow, has been taken to represent the very sin for which Lucifer was cast out of heaven. God detests pride, and James, the apostle, declares that God resists the proud, but he gives grace to the humble. So what is celebrated at these pride events? Sex, sexuality, sexual behaviors, perverted sex acts, and all things sexual, carnal, fleshly. Celebrating individual accomplishments is one thing, but celebrating sexual debauchery is nothing to be proud of. Let us call this what it is, celebration of sexual behaviors, not human identity. Christianity is a label that has lost all meaning. Many speakers at the last meeting identified as Christians, but what does that really mean? Most have their own opinion, their own thoughts, their own interpretation of God's Word, but the scripture is very clear. It says, neither the unrighteous, sexually immoral, idolaters, adulterers, men or women who practice homosexuality, thieves, greedy, drunkards, revilers, swindlers, none of these shall inherit the kingdom of God. Neither you nor I, neither of our opinions or sincere beliefs will change the word of God. Hate, it's a code word from a special interest group that attempts to silence those who disagree with their behavior. There's only one group at the meeting last week who talked repeatedly about hate, and another group that talked about love. Adhemiian attacks are straight out of the communist playbook, to shame, silence, and target people who disagree. It's interesting that people identify themselves by their sexual predilections and sexual behaviors, rather than by the content of their character. As a woman of color, when I walked in here tonight, I did not have to tell you I was a woman of color. Why? Because it was self-evident. However, any of my sexual behaviors, it's not self-evident. And finally, we are all God's creation, but we are not all God's children. As a matter of fact, Jesus said, some were children of the devil. God identifies his children as those who are led by his spirit, who obey him. Pride goes before destruction, and a haughty spirit before a fall. Thank you.
Evening.
Hello, council. Last Friday, a 27-year-old man walked up to a small clothing store displaying rainbow flags. He disparaged the flag to the owner, tearing it down before she confronted him, and he shot and killed her. The shop owner was Lori Carlton, age 66, a wife of 28 years and mother to nine children. Lori was an ally of the LGBTQ community. After the shooter was identified, I learned he had a public Twitter account still accessible. On there can be found plenty of evidence of this man's opinions about LGBTQ people. Worrisome was how familiar these opinions sound after some of the public comments platformed in this chamber. His most proud statement was a tweet that was pinned to the top of his page, "A Rainbow Flag on Fire," captioned "What to Do with the LGBTQ P Pride Flag." The P is his addition and refers to pedophiles. In another post, he captioned a depiction of Sodom and Gomorrah, quote, "Here is your pride month." As for social context, he wrote of the Dobbs decision, "Congratulations, guys, we did it. Our prayers have been answered after almost 50 years of Roe versus Wade. Never thought this day would come, glad it did." Next thing, "To abolish and overturn same-sex marriage and other LGBTQ policies." Hatred against LGBTQ people usually begins with violent words. For example, being called a slur in a verbal altercation is a clear sign that it's time to leave. Thankfully, our public comment hasn't yet descended to that level, yet. But this chamber has platformed statements warning the city that to recognize pride month is to welcome Sodom and Gomorrah, as well as numerous associations, including today, of child abuse, pedophilia, and predatory risk to children. One person explained articulately, if incorrectly, that all LGBTQ people were adherents of an ancient pagan cult. Reflecting on last Friday's violence, I'm reminded of a conversation I once had with a wildland firefighter a few years back during a rough fire season. He surprised me by explaining, quote, "We don't fight the fire, we guide it. You see, out in the wilderness where there's so much fuel, it's impossible to control the destruction everywhere at once. Instead, you shape the fire, setting boundaries and directing its flow away from people into a harmless end." I worry that continuing discriminatory rulemaking on pride month with a pseudo-rulemaking forum for public comment and council members abnegating their duties of intervening to ensure safe public discourse runs a risk of harm. I hope you are confident you can direct this safely.
Thank you. So as, as I have said before, this is your time to speak, whether you agree or disagree. This is not whether you're going to cheer or even have a public outburst. And all I ask is to understand, there's been comments about what is free speech, what is hate speech? Freedom of speech is very carefully controlled in the fact that this is a town hall forum, and we don't always have to like the things that we hear, we don't have to agree with the things that we hear. We just have to respect each other's right to the First Amendment and to share how they feel. And I would just, you know, ask the council or the, the audience not to engage in clapping or jeering or cheering, and just, just reflect on the comments that are made because they're yours. This is your time. Thank you.
Hi, council. My name is Frank Nellstone. I've been a resident here for my whole life, pretty much, and my family has also been residents here for the last three generations. I want to talk to you guys about the cannabis business program and its progress or lack thereof in Vacaville. Today, I wanted to bring some actual actionable data to you guys and actually talk about the growth of cannabis, not only in this region, but also in the country itself. Thirty-seven percent of U.S. adults are considered to be current consumers who either consume pot annually or plan to do so in the future. The other 30% U.S. adults have never used pot and don't intend to. Fifteen percent of Americans have never tried cannabis but are interested. Thirteen percent are former consumers who no longer partake. It's very interesting because since 2017, consumers ages 25, consumer ages from 25 to 20, 21 to 25, has increased by 20%. Some of the biggest increases in that four-year period included adults ages 65-plus with an increase of 96%, and adults from 40 to 44 with an increase of 64%. This is just around a rough consumer data model that I found after doing some data analytics and aggregation of some data I found. Have you guys noticed that cannabis around the country has very, it's not federally legalized, and because of that, there hasn't been a lot of resource, research, there hasn't been a lot of a lot of common data platforms, as well as areas to find this data. So normally, people like me have to actually go find this data, defragmented data, or fragmented data and defragmented by actually pulling it into like a data analytics pool and then actually parsing it as such. So what I found by that is some of the consumer data, consumer data is 83% of cannabis users use cannabis for unwinding, relaxation, stress mitigation, anxiety, and PTSD for our law enforcement and for our veterans and military. 61% is used for improved sleep, and 31% has been improved for appetite. There's been a lot of data surrounding a lot of other reasons why people use it, you know, for, you know, for working, socializing, things like that. But I like to, I like to say that because of these trends and because of this data, places like Sacramento, Dixon, Fairfield, Vailio, and a lot of these places have found that cannabis has been a significant driver in the Sacramento County and in other counties. I use Sacramento in general because Sacramento has been a model for a lot of these programs and a lot of new innovation that's coming to the state. The industry in Sacramento has generated $2.3 billion in economic activity since 2000, in 2021, supporting approximately 12,500 jobs. And based on the city's share of total Sacramento County, it is estimated that 2 billion of that and 11,000 of those jobs are actually within the city limits. The industry is on the cusp of a profound change in federal legalization and more normalization surrounding cannabis and all of its subsequent products. The state is on a, it's on an upward track, and I would like Vacaville to also be on that track as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff. Couple of things. One is, I'm confused why you have not moved forward on the flying the Christian flag. It's clear that the Pride Center is a political organization. They lobby for legislation, et cetera, and they put their weight behind a candidate. And yet, the simple act of equal representation here is not occurring. Pretty clear, and I've stated before, that actually, I love everyone. I might not agree with them, and I might dislike how the saying goes, hate the sin, love the sinner, and I'm a firm believer of that. As far as, I don't understand even why the city has got involved with Pride Month. I know it's the current thing, and I disagree with that, regardless of my sexual preference, et cetera. It's none of the rest of the public's business. And I've told you that my story a little bit about sharing home with gay couples, I don't have a problem with that. Yes, I'm libertarian-ish when it comes to those things, but the effect on kids and the stats that I presented to you, and I could present you with more, would say, just stay out of it. Don't do that. Keep our United, United States flag, you know, we're united regardless of our position. I was further alarmed by this trend by Senate Bill, State Senate Bill 14, which, again, died in committee but had bipartisan support, and that was to re, how do you say this? Refelonize child trafficking and sex trafficking of children. The state of California decriminalized that, and SB 14 had bipartisan support, but it died in committee again. There's a trend in the state of California and in my own community that they can't stand. Now, I had other things to do in my retirement, but we all have a calling, and my calling is keep my, or actually bring my community back to some level of sanity and reasonableness and balance. And I think that this council's action, and Mr. Mayor, you made a proclamation that the city has no business doing that. So I want you to reconsider that and think of the unintended consequences that this city council has imposed upon the community, especially the children. I mean, give them a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Tonya Espinoza, and I'm here to speak to you about the Speak Out Against the Proposed Lithium Ion Battery Storage Facility on Leisure Town Road. I have lived in North Village for 10 years. In those 10 years, the city has not made a positive change for my community in North Village specifically. The consideration of the proposed storage facility is another prime example of the lack of consideration for the safety of residents in North Village. Except this time, this decision could directly affect those who use Kaiser or live in Northern Brown's Valley, or due to the lack of information of long-term effects on soil or water contamination, this could affect all who are served by the wells in the area of this facility and Vacaville. Recently, New York had three of these facilities catch fire in one month. One of the battery facility personnel made an apology statement, and I quote, "Manufacturers ensure that their products satisfy the highest safety level standards," end quote. And yet, it still caught, they still caught fire. The question is not if, but when will it catch fire? The only way to ensure the highest safety standards for the residents of Vacaville is to build this facility far from hospitals, homes, and highways. This technology is still in its infancy and needs to be further explored prior to building next to hospital, homes, and highways. Any council member planning or planning commissioner in favor of this facility in this location will have made it clear that the safety of Vacaville residents is not their priority. So I ask you, do you want your legacy of a council member to be responsible for one of the biggest catastrophes Vacaville has ever seen because it is, because that is what it will be seen as when this facility catches fire? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Wiley, and Council members. The LGBTQ plus Pride Flag represents safety. As a queer person, whenever I travel, I see stores, libraries, churches, and cities that put up pride flags, and it's like a beacon. It tells me that I am safe here. It's honestly amazing how powerful that symbol is for me and people in my community in making us feel safe, like we are human, just like everyone else, that we are accepted and that we belong. When we see a place with a pride flag, we know that we will not be harassed and intimidated for just existing, or at least that if we are, there are people who will protect us and back us up. As you heard earlier, just this week in Cedar Glen, California, Lori Carlton was murdered by a man after he made some derogatory remarks about the pride flag she flew outside her business. This wasn't the first time someone had taken down the pride flags from her store. Her children say that every time someone tore down a pride flag, she would put one right back up, and she was killed because of it. I'm definitely not accusing those who are trying to take the pride flag down here in Vacaville of being murderers or anything. What I am saying is that it is impossible for those of us in the LGBTQ plus community and our allies to ignore the connection between taking down the pride flag and a willingness to look the other way about violence toward our community, especially right now. I genuinely have hope that everyone on this council wants to make Vacaville a welcoming place. I have faith that you want to make Vacaville a safe place for everyone who lives here and visits here. You have communicated that support to our community for years by flying the flag. Please do not take the flag down when we need that support the most. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris. I'm an educator and LGBTQ ally, and as an educator and ally, I find it's always important to talk about context. So while many arguments about personal grievances and the pride flag, or even the city's right to put it up, it's important to remember that the flag has been up, and as such, public support has been shown, which is good. What some here are arguing for is to never put the flag up again. And here's what that means in context. According to the ACLU, ACLU, 494 laws across the country have recently been proposed, which aim directly at harming and marginalizing the LGBTQ community. Many of these laws are aiming to take away rights to healthcare, job opportunities, free speech, or even the right to be visible within our own schools. The community is under attack. Throughout history and currently, the LGBT community has been targets of scapegoat campaigns, causing individuals to be attacked legally and physically. The pride flag is a message against that hate and a message of safety and acceptance. Putting the pride flag down, as is being proposed, can be a quiet affair, but in times like this, the message it sends is deafening. It would be interpreted as a disregard for the current campaign of hate and as a message that you are no longer safe here. And we don't want that. I don't think anyone in this council wants that either. History has shown us that those who stand by in silence embolden those with hate to take action. Vacaville will not be bullied into silence. When a message like this is proposed, it's important that we stand together and show our support louder. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Wiley, and City Council. My name is Donna Harris. At the last meeting, you heard a few people assure you that only one flag was needed to fly over our cities, the flag of the United States of America. It assured liberty and justice for all, and nothing more was needed. I want to ask each one of you, do you feel personally safe in your communities, in yourselves? Do Jewish communities feel justice when others defile their synagogues, flood their neighborhoods with vile leaflets, attack and kill their members at prayer? Do young black men and women feel they are accorded the same liberty and justice from the police or anyone who doesn't want them to be where they want to be, where they are, where they have the right to be? Elderly Asian women doing their family shopping? Any woman who wishes to work and have equal pay as a man has? Latinos trying to help their families live a better life than they lived? LGBTQ who never know who it is safe to come out to or to be themselves with, including people of my age forced back into the closet after fighting to come out because they're afraid in their nursing homes and assisted living? So long as people believe that we've already achieved that liberty and justice, they will not put themselves out to make it true for others. They're satisfied. That's it. You heard that yourselves last month. We must remind these people and all people that we have not yet reached that goal of liberty and justice, and we must continue to fight for it. I believe we can do that best by acknowledging communities who are not yet in that all and let them know, as well as those who wish to keep them out, that we do see them, and they do have the right to be part of that proud picture that our American flag paints for all. They are part of that all. The most visible way to put our actions into our flag's words are by sharing airspace with those communities, one each month, or more, or more often, whatever is needed, until we are all sharing liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Carley and Council members. My name is Orion Lam, and I want to shine a light on the LGBTQ youths in our community. I am a chemistry professor at Solano College, not far from here, so I am constantly around young adults, and so many of them identify as LGBTQ, and the ones that don't are supportive of their LGBTQ peers. This is just how it is, and this is the future. I also co-facilitate a trans non-binary support group at Solano Pride Center, and many that come are young adults. We meet every Friday, and not a single meeting has gone by that someone has not expressed how the group is their lifeline, the only thing they look forward to the whole week. These young people are isolated and often are in home situations that are unsupportive, which creates unnecessary stress that leads to poor mental health. When youths have a bad home life, they should be able to look outside of their homes, to their communities for support and hope. We cannot fail them. When they don't see the pride flag raised in their own city, it tells them that they don't belong anywhere, not at home, not at their community. And I also want to speak to the charge and the narrative out there that supporting LGBTQ kids and youths is grooming them. I myself have known that I was trans since I was four years old. My behavior and identity was constantly at odds with my family's ideas of what a girl should behave like, and I was forced to conform for so many years. But all of that outside influence, even from my loved ones, were unsuccessful. No one could change who I am. I still transitioned and live happily and successfully as a man. No amount of discouragement, anti-LGBTQ laws, and rhetoric will erase LGBTQ kids and youths. But your anti-LGBTQ hurtful words and discriminatory actions will drive them to joblessness, homelessness, depression, and suicide. Your words and actions have the ability to hinder these individuals from becoming healthy, successful, contributing members of society. I wish I was being dramatic, but according to the Trevor's Project 2022 National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health, they found that 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, including more than half of transgender and non-binary youth. So to all of you that subscribe to the idea that protecting the rights of LGBTQ youths to live as who they are is grooming them, why are you hiding behind this mask? Just come out and say you don't care, because if you did care, you would do at least the most basic, bare minimum supportive action, and that's to keep flying the pride flag and continue to recognize June as the Pride Month. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Evening.
Good evening. Hi, thank you. My name is Pam Behringer, and I am here to talk about the battery storage that is going to be on Mills, or not on Mills Lane, but 600 feet from my home, because I live on Mills Lane. I am here to ask that you folks think of something else to put there. We have a hot air balloon facility in Napa that constantly flies over, and they're looking for places to land. They used to fly over our house every morning. That would be a perfect spot if somebody could get with them. You won't have to worry about the flooding because the balloons don't fly in the winter. So that would help a flooding issue. You won't have to worry about contamination when the battery facility burns and contaminates my well, because I'm 600 feet away from it, and the public wells with all the well 52 or 56, what's there at the corner. If you didn't want to do that, I heard somebody tonight talk about cannabis. Man, you guys could put, make tax revenue like crazy 32 acres of cannabis, okay? I mean, it's an up-and-coming thing, regardless of anybody wants to cop to it or not, you know? But you could make bank. And the homeless heating and cooling shelter, where that facility's at, there'd be nowhere for the homeless to go after they took their shower. I mean, they could walk to North Village. There's no, no place. How about a shopping center? 32-acre shopping center would be wonderful for North Village and all that. And I don't care if a Christian flag is flown. I don't care if a pride flag is flown. I was raised, and I was told I could be anything I wanted to be. And if my children were to come up to me and tell me they were gay or they were trans, I would accept that because I told them they could be anybody they wanted to be. But in any case, please do not put that battery storage there. It's a catastrophe. That's all it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, staff, thank you for letting me speak here. I'm here about the lithium battery storage power plant, whatever it's going to be. I haven't got all the information on it, but it's out there. I'm here to voice my opposition to placing that lithium power plant in a residential area, Leisure Town and Midway Road. area, leisure town in Midway Road. While we all understand there is a need for alternative powers, fossil fuels, and battery power is one of those, placing a battery plant in a residential neighborhood with the potential for fire and smoke, we can all go online and look at these fires and the smoke, and sometimes they burn for weeks. They can't be put out. They have to burn out, and then we're breathing that air. Vacaville, if I'm not mistaken, is on majority wells, right? So we get some of this chemical leaching down into the groundwater, now we're poisoning ourselves. Sorry, excuse me. Okay, and I hear that, you know, Maynard Energy is offering incentives such as a park, swimming pool, possibly even the school, whatever's going on out there. And I think that regardless, there's nothing more valuable than our families and our children. And to put that at danger, I vote no. I ask you to do the same. So at this point, I'll say it again, please put the people, your constituents first, over a swimming pool, over a park. You've heard other suggestions, shopping center, gas station, revenue for the city. We don't need a free swimming pool in a residential neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Alicia Minion. I want to talk to you about something I've talked to you before at the podium, and I also sent an email, and it's about development agreements. The city has about 15 development agreements. Development agreements, as you know, provide a guarantee to a developer to build something like a master plan, and in return for providing that developer a guarantee, the city should be compensated. The guarantee to build increases the land value for the developers because the development agreement creates entitlements, invested rights, that sometime lasts for decades. So the city should only be entering into development agreements when the project itself is extraordinary, and in return, the city receives special compensation for that. One of the special compensation items is called a community benefit contribution fee. The community benefit contribution fee has been negotiated not only for the South Town Development Agreement, which ultimately the staff, you all, and I'm not blaming you, I'm not, I know you're all intelligent and you're, you know, qualified to make decisions, but my concern is sometimes the staff doesn't bring you complete information. So you made a decision to eliminate this community benefit fee without having complete data and actually having inaccurate data and without the staff quantifying the loss in revenue for this fee being eliminated. One example is the South Town Development Agreement, which was supposed to be extended because Planning Commission approved it. Staff never brought it to council. It died. You remember the ugly story. I quantify the loss. The CBC fee that you lost is $4 million. You also lost the ability to levy a Melrose tax. So the apartments that isn't paying the Melroos, they're just paying sort of a flat upfront fee. I was able to calculate the present value of that cash flow stream because the Melrose is in perpetuity. You lost over $13 million. KB Homes was part of that previous master plan. They're building 242 units. They've already said they don't want to levy the fee. If they're successful in not levying the Melrose, you will lose another $21 million. On the South Town Development Agreement alone, you could potentially lose over $38 million. I'm asking you that at the next council meeting or soon, you agendize a topic of development agreements. You have no controls, and you're losing millions because of the elimination of this fee. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time. I am completely unprepared. Everyone else here knew this was going on. I just walked in my door, and I found a little note on my wall that says lithium battery facility in my area, so I put a frozen pizza in the oven for my kids, and I ran down here like this. Thank you for your time, and I apologize for not being prepared, but I just wanted to be here to speak on this. I will be much more prepared if this does continue and end up being something on an agenda item and something we can vote on or pressure you to vote on. I will be more informed and be prepared. I'm totally against the farm of batteries. We already have some sort of solar panel farm nearby, over by the college. There's something there already. There were plans for the development in our area. I don't recall this ever being there in the plan. Somebody articulated all the different issues that happened with batteries. I can tell you today on my way home, I'm bringing my car into the dealership because something's wrong with my brand-new car's battery, and it keeps shutting off when it was 110 and 115 degrees last week. So I think we know that there are issues with batteries. I would like you to please consider that there will be a lot more people here in the future prepared, including me, if we continue with this battery issue. So thank you for your time, and I really appreciate the people who are here tonight to speak about that, because it will impact our families in a negative way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd recommend that in the future, we go to the American flag, the state flag, and the city flag, so we can get on with city business. About the city business, in previous years, different entities in the city council had rejected similar proposals to lithium ion storage facilities along the city area. Part of the reason had been that it didn't provide very many permanent jobs, and it wasn't in keeping with the whole plan of the city's light industrial area, which is sustainable, continuing, regular jobs. Lithium ion battery facility, or an often, as you know, they emit toxic waste because the batteries deteriorate. They have to be disposed of somewhere. They weigh tens of thousands of pounds, and it's all hazardous material. How that is green energy, I do not know, but we save that for another time. What are you going to do with it? Well, the company that's running this thing, if any company actually runs it at all, isn't going to want to spend a lot of money to haul these things away piece at a time, so they're going to probably let them sit on site for some years leaking until such times they have a good load. Then they'll have to spend a ton of money to deposit them in someplace unknown. The city already owns that land. It costs you nothing to keep it. Why not? Because the city manager a couple weeks ago said that great things were happening out in the corridor along where Genentech is now, and we all know that Genentech is leaving, but unless my hearing failed me again, the city manager mentioned that a lot of new places had made tentative offers or were interested in coming into Vacaville. Well, if we start having a vibrant manufacturing or bioengineering, whatever it's going to be in that corridor, this piece of property isn't that far away. You own it. It would be a possible dealmaker to lure someone in. Why would you throw away the best card you've got in your hand? And furthermore, since I still have some time, we can go into painful discussion about the toxic gases that are given off when these plants burn, which they do frequently, but I'll save that for another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dave McCollum, a lifelong resident of Vacaville. I want to make a pitch to the city, and that is for the forum that's going to take place on September 7th at Solano College, the Vacaville campus, about the Menard Energy Project. I've read a lot about this issue. My inclination is to oppose it based on what I've read, but I'll be perfectly honest, I don't know everything. And I know that the city is going to have representatives there, Menard Energy is going to have representatives there. I have a lot of questions, and a lot of people will. It's been my experience in public forums like that, that not all questions are fully vetted and get appropriate answers, and not necessarily on purpose, but just because all the experts aren't there to answer those questions. So I would encourage the city and Menard to make sure that the Regional Water Quality Control Board reps are there, reps from the Air Quality Management District, soil experts from the county as well need to be there, and also the County Office of Emergency Services, because in the event of an emergency, we want to know what the plan is. So if we can make sure that everyone is there to be able to answer all the questions that are sure to come up, I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Carley and Vice Mayor Wiley and council members. I didn't get a chance to email you my comments from last meeting, so I decided I would come back to this meeting to share them directly. You all know me, Mary Vasquez. The current proclamation policy that's within the Policies and Procedures Manual really needs to be revised so that it is not solely in the hands of the mayor and a policy that allows for any council member to bring forward a proclamation and ratify it by a simple majority vote. I did reach out to city staff and confirmed that there is no current flag policy, so I do encourage you all to adopt one that is inclusive of commemorative flags, including the pride flag and potentially other cultural months. The efforts of inclusivity within the policies will continue to be a signaler to all residents of Vacaville, but in particular for Pride Month to our LGBTQIA+ community and neighbors that they are welcomed here and that they're safe here. This is by no means divisive but unifying, and so I ask you as a council and strongly encourage you all to communicate with staff ahead of time to ensure that what options are presented to you all are, you know, potentially for a flag policy but also a revised proclamation policy that are inclusive and representative of the city's strategic goal number five to promote community engagement and increased equity and inclusion. As of today, I'm still really strongly concerned that none of you have condemned the comments associating the LGBTQIA+ community with pedophilia and this rhetoric that we have to protect our children from this community. It's really sad that none of you all have made any comments in this council chambers to condemn that rhetoric. I encourage you to go back and listen to July 25th and compare it to the August 8th business from the floor. And those comments, while they were still offensive, were much more calm once some of us residents came out to call out the hate speech. You all have allowed hate speech to fill the space and air in this council chambers, and it's shameful, and it's really sad. And while you all are allowing it under the claim of free speech, you as an individual can stand against hate spewed at the last few meetings. Hate speech is not free speech. Again, this language is dangerous, and allowing it to perpetuate continues to be a distraction, like many other folks have said. You all have really important city business to attend to, and I just encourage you to stand on the right side of history.
Thank you.
My name is Bridget Riley. I'm on the Board of Directors for Solano Pride Center. I want to make a correction of something that was stated tonight. We are not a political organization, and we do not support individual candidates. We are funded by Solano County for mental health for youth and families that need it desperately. We are supported by Kaiser, and they know how much we need this support for our communities. Haven't enough people died and fought so that everyone can have free will, so that everyone can be who they want to be and be supported in their communities. We desperately need this for our children, for our families, for our communities, who would otherwise not be able to recognize themselves. It's a support that we need from you. They are our community. We are their community, and we are everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening.
Hello. I'd like to address the council and the topic of the permanent cooling and heating centers. I find this concept to be highly constructive, because although Vacaville is established since 1850, and the full adult being that is Vacaville is adaptable, his grandchildren and his great-grandchildren are most likely, by today's standards, not very adaptable. It's just what we're living in, in a milieu of struggle. And so if you guys can see clearly with perhaps all of your districts in one combined with an all-searching eye of the necessary space for a permanent cooling and heating scenery, you could see clearly that it has an aspect of building up towards capable citizens found where? In Vacaville, to the pride of city and township available to all of you guys and all of us in the world at large. So in an act of civic duty, I suppose I would make these statements of my own accord to help people know that Vacaville is a place safe and capable of sustaining and being rooted, that all citizens can grow and branch out themselves and become some sort of healing at some point to those round about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak as this gets near the end? If you could make your way to the aisle so that I know that you're going to be speaking? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm Danielle Shay. I'm here as an ally to the LGBTQIA+ community, and I'm just here to highlight that an argument was made about freedom of speech and it allowing for people to say defamatory things about the LGBTQIA+ community. The city of Vacaville Council Policies and Procedures adopted November 10, 2020, gives clear guidelines for council members and how they are to manage public participation, and it specifically prohibits defamatory speech per Vacaville Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Section 4. Cities all over the country adopt and adhere to rules and decorum and order for public meetings. It's common practice. It often prohibits speech that is protected under the First Amendment in favor of a meeting that is accessible by all who would like to participate. My concern is when the city and council use convenient interpretation to abandon those rules to defer to First Amendment rights. Defamatory speech is prohibited in Vacaville's municipal code, and what we have heard handily qualifies as defamation. This is clearly a discussion that's going to continue until it comes before council as an agenda item. We need to do better for our community. When people don't feel comfortable participating and when there are comments made from the audience to people who have spoken or who are about to speak, that's not allowing public participation. It's not allowing free and easy access to these meetings, and people don't feel safe participating after hearing some of the things that have been said here. Defamation is impugning anybody's reputation or character, and that has happened in the last three meetings profusively. I expect better, and I also ask that council make personal comments or denounce the speech that's happened here in favor of supporting all community members, because you do represent people of this community, the LGBTQIA+ community, and I think that they need to hear it. Thank you.
Good evening.
If we get to talk again, don't we? Okay, I just have a couple things. One, the lithium battery. I think this is really insane, for one, and to hear a Green New Deal. The reason why I say that? Let's go back to 1941, where Henry Ford with the bi- hemp plastic, which is biodegradable, that's all made with, let's see, with wheat, flax, sprouts, pulp. But we don't think like that. We rather bring in lithium batteries. We don't think of schools. We rather have 34 adult prisons with a capacity of 85,000-plus incarcerated people. That's what's important to us, not schools, not schools. We do need schools here, especially when we put this lithium battery. Where are the schools? But we're talking about this. We keep putting off schools that has been talking about for quite a while, quite a while, but yet we're still here talking about something like this, but not education. A Green New Deal is something like this. This is a Green New Deal, and we can actually afford it. It actually works with hemp fuel. This is back 1941. We haven't outdone that today. We're still doing Carnegie Steel Technology from the 1800s. We're still talking about these things. Lithium battery, how does that help the environment? Is it where Earth... Is it where earth element? You had to dig down deep to get this element, the lithium, the destruction that is done everywhere, but yet we're talking about this. No schools, no schools, no parks, but we're talking about this. 34 adult prisons in the state of California. San Francisco's falling apart based off of, wow, no schools, no after do after school programs. Get your priorities in order. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. Don, council, most of you guys know me. My name is Blake Borchers. My family owns the main grape, the wine bar and restaurant downtown. Wasn't really prepared to speak today, but since I had a few minutes and I've been trying to get this people in the room to as a certain degree, I just wanted to bring up, most of the council members, especially Mayor Carley, got to where you are on that stage about or whatever it is about talking about activating downtown and bringing great things downtown and and making it a assembly area, a place where people want to go. Unfortunately, I've it's been kind of I've seen that that's not necessarily translating to city staff, not necessarily in my just my project, but I feel that there is a huge disconnect in processes for permits, things that are allowed downtown, the processes for getting those things done. And I just asked formally, now it's kind of on the record, if we could maybe have a little bit more interaction with the businesses downtown and maybe move forward with some of those things to activate downtown. We just had an awesome, awesome weekend with the farmer's market. It was kind of mishandled in the sense that half of downtown was shut down for no reason, but the part that was activated, it was awesome, and I haven't seen that many people out in a very long time. And so I just wanted to bring it up. Like I said, I've talked to most of you guys individually, but now you're all together. If if it's something that you guys really want to do, it's kind of time to to be about it and not talk about it anymore. So.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council before I close public comment? I'm going to close public comment, but I am just going to clarify, it's just for the record, during public comment, this is business items that are not on the agenda. And so while we're sitting here listening, don't don't misunderstand that for not caring or not having personal thoughts, feelings, or opinions about these items that potentially can come to the council in the future. It's just the way it is. It's a formal meeting. It's structured appropriately. I can assure you, there's a lot of notes that get taken, and there's usually a lot of conversations that happen afterwards. So it is your time. It's important to hear your your voice, and that's why the concept of decorum and the attitudes that we we take here are very serious. It's not lost on me, the issues that I said earlier, the First Amendment is highly protected, and the legalities of hate crimes versus the feeling of what we might consider hateful rhetoric. We use paraphrased words such as hate speech, and it can be very offensive to people, but it doesn't negate the fact that someone can come to this podium in the the most democratic way, even if it's uncomfortable, and share how they feel. And I just wanted to say that this is not this is a very important sensitive topic for the community, and I've said it at the previous council meetings. It was it was called for to be agendized in the future. At the last meeting, I said it would be sometime in September or October, depending upon staff being ready for the discussion and how we're handling that. And that is still in the works, and that will be a properly and duly noticed meeting for all the public to be able to share their comments and their feelings. So that's the reason for Business from the Floor is to address things that are not on tonight's agenda item, and that's that's what this time is for. So I appreciate that. And with that, we're going to take, can we take about five minutes and have a short recess? Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
About? Well, no, we're not. We're going to get this meeting back in order, and while we reassemble the the council chambers and you you take your seat, appreciate that everyone had a chance to have a short recess. We concluded Business from the Floor, but Councilmember Chapman wanted to just say one thing.
Thank you. I was going, I wanted to concur with what our mayor had stated, had shared at the end of the presentations from members who of the audience who came forward to speak with us. And I just want to reiterate, just for myself in particular, I can't speak for the others on this particular point, but it's very painful to sit here, what to hear all the views that are coming from people who take time from their schedule in the evening to come forward to speak with us. We don't, I can't, that's it, not we, I do not always, I would state, I do not always or do not agree with many of the statements that are stated. However, I'm here to hear you. I'm here to listen, and so I just want that to be known, that many things were stated that I could not and do not support. However, I'm responsible to everyone who choose to come before us to hear you. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, can we move on to item 8A?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This first item before you tonight is a resolution adopting an amended City of Vacaville Urban Water Management Plan. Justin Cole and team are here to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bush, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'd like to introduce Jigger Shaw, the newest team member to the Utilities Management Team, who'll be doing the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Justin. Mayor and the council, that should help, thank you. And I'm going to be respectful with the time, so I'm going to fly through this, not fly through, but be very brief on this presentation. But I wanted to make it clear as well that any questions or any more details that council member may need in the future, then we are happy to provide that. With that, back in 1983, state of California provided an Urban Water Management Planning Act and required all the public public water suppliers to prepare an urban water management plan. Along with these other regulations, the state also mandated these water agencies in order to meet the statewide 20% water use reduction by 2020. Be another regulation followed to that also requires and provides some of the means and methods in order to meet this goal.
If I can add on, the department budget is fungible to some degree, so if there is grant money that could offset the cost of, say, putting in this project, that could focus more money that we have through our rates for recycled water. We are working with Travis, they're doing the T R R R, Travis Risk Resiliency, and I don't know what the last R is, I apologize, but at potentially a recycled water partnership project with Travis. We've met with them a couple of times offline, and we're kind of hopeful that that may gain some traction, and that'll actually further kind of help move this forward quicker. It really is kind of a funding issue, but recycled water is a piece of our water portfolio going forward for Vacaville to be successful.
I'm just going to make a quick ask if Vice Mayor Wiley has any questions or comments on this item.
Thank you, thank you. I do have one question. I appreciated the presentation, and, you know, the 162 gallons per capita number is, I'm glad it's within the guidelines that it needs to be, but do other cities our size have the same about the same sort of a usage, or is ours high compared to other cities or low? Or I'm not even sure if you have that information, but just how does the 162 kind of kind of average look with other cities?
Yeah, thank you. So at this point, what there are four different methods that we could select, and City of Vacaville, we chose the 95% regional guidelines, which means that for the Solano County and any surrounding areas, the 95% of achieving that 20% statewide goal is what we are we are approaching for. We don't have any other data for any surrounding cities and the agencies, what what regulations that they have and what method that they may have followed. So this is what we have selected based on our consultant's help, as well as some of our previous analysis that we have done in-house. So don't have sufficient data for other cities or or agencies for you.
Okay, so it was 95% of the 188, which was the last time we reported it. So as long as it brings us within our our area and we're good and the grant able to apply, thank you very much for your work then.
No more comments?
Motion to approve 8A.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman? Yes. Vice Mayor Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Carley?
Yes. All right, thank you for the presentation. We'll move on to item 9B, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This next item before you is a variety of different resolutions and ordinance all related to the North Village Area Plan Two project. We have Erin Morris and Alberino from our Community Development Department with the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Now, item before you tonight is the North Village Area Plan 2 project. This map illustrates the boundary where the project is located, bound by Vacaville Parkway, Interstate 505, Midway Road to the north, and Leisure Town Road. The North Village specific plan is a master plan development community that was approved in 1995. It encompasses approximately 880 acres with residential units that are single-family and multifamily for a total unit count of 22,499 units. The master plan included commercial, business park, land uses for college and elementary school site, as well as designations for a swim club, a public park, and large amounts of open space. The area that was designated for a public school, but that one was converted over into residential. Area Plan 2, which is not built out, has not started construction. It encompasses 1,151 units with also single-family, multifamily development. It contains large amounts of open space, public park designation, and a designation for a private swim club. This graphic shows how that specific plan is divided into the two areas. Specific plan was originally approved in 1995, and Area Plan 1 is almost built out. And the developer for the project is looking at making amendments to the specific plan, and then it can be described as six changes that are being proposed. First, the applicant's looking at making changes to the general plan and zoning map to move around designations. The second is to reserve an 11-acre school site in Area Plan 2. The site was originally identified in Area Plan 1, but it could not be built in that area, so the developer is looking at reserving a site for a school site in this Area Plan 2 area. The third request is to extend the development agreement by 20 years until 2045 to allow them to continue building. The fourth request is to increase the overall unit count by 100 units from 2499 to 2599. The applicant would also like to update various exhibits in the North Village specific plan to show the rearrangement of land use designations that will be changing in the general plan and zoning map. The applicant's also requesting to obtain a vesting tentative map for this Area Plan 2. This is not the first time the project has been before a public hearing. Back in September, the project went to the Planning Commission for review, and the commission voted 5-0 to recommend approval on the project. In October, City Council saw this project and held a public hearing on the item, but identified several items that needed to continue to be worked on and continued the project to the December meeting. Another hearing in December was held, and the City Council at that time continued the project to a future meeting to address several items. The applicant took those items and worked with the plans and re-submitted the application and project plans to the city in March of this year. And those items were reviewed and put together as part of a planning commission package last month, where the planning commission reviewed those changes as with the original project. Change was a result of moving that apartment site, in that the school site was moved north, and the site layout was slightly changed. A third change resulting from that apartment site and school site maneuver was that 2.4 acres were transferred from residential low density to residential medium density. There was no change to the original proposal for the unit count in this Area Plan 2. And then the tentative map was updated to reflect the changes of these land use designations with updated infrastructure layout, circulation, and law configuration. There were, there were no changes to the specific plan or the development agreement that was originally shown to City Council in December. These changes only affect the general plan map, zoning map, and vesting tentative map. Exhibit on your left shows the original proposal for the general plan designation that was presented to City Council in December. And on the right of your screen, you'll see that the residential high-density site was moved south to be part of that first phase of improvements. The school site was moved north, and it is bound by the park on the right, as well as high-density to the south. During this review process, we worked with the Vacaville Unified School District to make sure that the new layout for the school and its location would be okay for their facilities and for their needs. The companion map that goes along with the general plan is a zoning map, and that these are the proposed designations that were reflected as submitted by the applicant in March. The exhibit on the left shows the original December proposal, and the exhibit on the right shows the change that was affected. When city staff looked at the revised vesting tentative map, we identified that there were five new conditions that needed to be added to make sure that the applicant was going to be complying with city code. Condition number 25 requires applicant to install a masonry wall between the future apartments and then the detached single-family homes that would be right next to it. Condition number 28 requires the apartment site not to access primary access to the site on North Village Parkway, but instead on secondary access streets for safety purposes. Condition number 29 requires applicant to install a masonry wall between the single-family homes that abut the offline basin, that's proposed at the northeast corner of the site. Condition number 30 requires a masonry wall between the single-family homes and Leisure Town Road for noise purposes. And condition number 59 was presented to us from the Traffic Engineering Division, and it's a requirement for them to add traffic circles and calming measure devices at specific intersections within the project. Going back to December of last year, City Council at that time identified four concerns with the original project that was presented to them. And the first starts with the timing for construction of the apartments. At that time, City Council expressed concern with wanting to make sure that the apartments were included within the first phase of development. What the applicant has done to the plan is move the apartment site, so that way its frontages will be accessible during the first phases of development when they're laying streets, sidewalks, and other infrastructure, so that way if the market can bear at that time, the apartments could be constructed within the first phase. The second concern was, the City Council expressed an interest with having the proposed inclusionary housing provisions from the applicant broken down into the various brackets for incomes. And so what the applicant has, is now proposing is that the 100 units that are going to be rent restricted, that would be in the form of accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units, will be broken up into the moderate income category, low income category, and very low income category. The third concern expressed by City Council was about the swim club and whether or not the airport restrictions would impede the ability for the construction of the swim club, because the airport restrictions requires that no more than 75 persons per, no more than 75 persons could be allowed per acre at the site. The proposal from the applicant is to add swim clubs as an allowable use within the business park designation, that's an area C of the natural airport compatibility plan. So what staff did was we reached out to two private swim clubs in shape facilities within Vacaville and Fairfield to determine what their density looked like for occupants within their facilities. And then we looked at the, the Graham Center, the public facility over off of Three Oaks Center, and we found that the densities for the private swim clubs, because people had to pay, was much lower and would fit within the parameters that the airport restrictions are, while the pri, the public swim club had a much higher density of occupants that were attending at that location. Another concern associated with a swim club was making sure that the applicant was committed to performing outreach with homeowners in Area Plan 1 to assess whether or not there was interest in a swim club, a private swim club within the area. And so staff added a condition of approval for number six, which requires applicant to conduct preliminary outreach within 180 days if City Council decides to approve the project with all the residents within Area Plan 1. And then also prior to recording the second final map, the applicant has to conduct more detailed outreach with all the residents that are within North Village for the construction of a private swim club. The last concern expressed by council was the need for additional disclosures to future home, number of public benefits includes missing middle housing, which is a need that the city has. It's being proposed that the project would provide duets in that form for that missing middle housing. The project resolves an issue with providing a school site with an Area Plan 2. The original Area Plan 1 did not, was unable to be able to provide a school site because it conflicted with airport operations. The move of the school site into Area Plan 2 does not conflict with airport operations. And Vacaville Unified School District has been along for the ride on the review of this site to make sure that the site itself has adequate public access, the size of the school site meets their needs, and that the way it's located and situated next to the park is satisfactory for them. The project itself would provide more street right-of-way along Midway Road to make it safer for traveling along. The project site results in a better land use layout overall compared to the 1995 product, because the park itself would be moved to a safer location instead of straddling along North Village Parkway, which is a major arterial. Now, it's going to be located internal to the site, and it's going to be next to this proposed school site, as well as the apartment site for ease of access and joint uses. The proposed amendment also adds a number of additional land uses to the business park to make that area more viable. And then the project itself will require the developer to build the neighborhood park, as well as the dog park, as part of the project. A recap on the environmental assessment, the original North Village specific plan had with it an environmental impact report that was certified in 1995, and that disclosed the impacts associated with development within Area Plan 1 and Area Plan 2. What the California Environmental Quality Act requires the city to do as the lead agency is to evaluate whether or not there are changes between proposed amendments. And in this particular case, the change resulted in the increased request of 100 units from 2,499 to 2,599 units. So staff worked with a consultant, StanTech, to prepare an addendum to evaluate the changes of adding 100 units, and we found that there was a decrease in the business park designation as a result of conservation easement requirements. And that negated the additional increase associated with traffic and water usage and sewer usage associated with the additional 100 units. So we have an addendum document that was prepared and is included as part of the staff report packet, the analysis and comparison. We looked at whether or not the additional changes from the applicant would result in any changes to that environmental document, and we confirm that it's still accurate for the project. Last month, we had a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and there were concerns that were expressed by the public. The main concern was about public outreach and whether or not there had been enough public outreach for this project, so we recap for the Planning Commission as well here tonight for City Council. We had two neighborhood meetings. Each of those neighborhood meetings required approximately 1,200 notices. Everyone within North Village was notified, as well as 1,000 feet beyond that border. There's also been three public hearings, one Planning Commission meeting, and then two other City Council meetings, so the Planning Commission meeting from last month would mark four, this is number five, for those public hearings. The Planning Commission expressed acknowledgement over the disclosures that were being proposed by the developer for the apartment site, as well as the school site, but felt that there was also a need for disclosing to the apartment renters, the condition of the school district site, and then the timing for development of the park site. And so the commission, as part of their action and discussion with the applicant, the applicant agreed to add disclosures for the future renters within the apartment, so that way they're aware of the timing of the park, as well as the school. At the end of that night, the Planning Commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval to City Council. But with all of that, there's a conclusion, in that it's the Planning Commission staff, we support this project. It does meet the findings that are required in the municipal code. It complies with various general plan policies that are identified in the findings of fact. It's consistent with the airport compatibility plans as determined by the Solano County Airport Land Use Commission. The project would provide a school site with an Area Plan 2 for Vacaville Unified School District. The project would develop and build a neighborhood park, as well as a dog park, that would need to start about 50% of development occurring within Area Plan 2. And then the project itself, if you look at the land use layout, it provides a variety of different housing for the, for the city. So with that, there is recommendations for City Council to adopt the subject resolutions and to introduce the subject ordinances. That, we're here to answer any questions. The applicant's also here to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I know this is a long time coming and coming back to the council. I'll start with questions from the council. Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, quite thorough. When you mentioned the groundwork that would be done on the first phase, first part, for the apartments, you mentioned the groundwork foundation. However, will the apartments be built first?
The current provisions would be that there's no requirement for the apartments to be built, and the applicant can speak more as to the timing of why the apartments are burdened by the market conditions for when the timing should be built.
I think that was part of the discussion from the, from the council, was the, we wanted the apartments to be built first. It's not about laying the ground, sand it, it's coming. You know, laying the groundwork, yes, you do that first, but that could be the last thing to be built. So I would like a little more specification on that. And then the other thing was, I noticed that it went from low-density to medium-density housing.
Oh, medium?
Medium. What did I say?
You said medium.
Yeah, go back to...
I think it went to low, medium.
Yeah, low-density to low-medium density. Is that, explain that to me. What, that is something that we want, we needed the low-density housing, correct? For the city? Weren't we out of, oh, I'm sorry for looking at you. I'll go back over here.
If you could answer that, but I think that this was based upon the request to increase density, or do you know?
The transfer, and the applicant's also here to explain the transfer, it was a product, it was a byproduct of their need to move the apartment site down south, as well as shifting the school site. And that was the result in order for them to not have their bottom line of the number of units change. Otherwise, the shifting of those would have resulted in a decrease in units. So this change was allowed, the change was necessary for them to keep the bottom line number of units that they're proposing to build in Area Plan 2.
I would also just add that it also increases the diversity of the housing types that can be built, because it introduces more of a slightly denser range, and that's where the city might get more, you know, duets or denser, single-family house products.
Councilmember Silva?
Thank you. You mentioned, so, I didn't catch it, so I apologize. So is there, so with the staff's proposal, would include some type of disclosure to inform apartments, apartment renters and homeowners about the school situation?
Correct.
And what, what does that look like? How would that be?
It'd be something comparable to what you're seeing for Attachment 2, where the renters, as part of their office, when they're signing their lease, they would have disclosures about the information on the timing for the school, that it's subject to VUSD, as well as the timing for the park, which is identified in the development agreement.
And I'm sorry, is that a standalone document, or is that like a one-page separate document, or?
It'd be comparable to the disclosure that's identified on Attachment 2. The first disclosure that's there is an example of something that would be provided to homeowners. That document could be replicated for apartment renters when they're getting ready to sign their lease.
Okay. The school site, the area that's on our map, it says school site. I just need to clarify publicly, when it says school site, does that mean it's, there a school will be coming? Or is that just being reserved in, in the event that a school can be supported to be developed on the spot?
Being reserved for school. There is a current requirement, and there's a memorandum of understanding between the developer and the school district, that the developer is obligated to provide frontage improvements for the school, as well as extend utilities to the sites in the event that Vacaville Unified School District is ready to develop the site. It's all ready to go, and they don't have to perform any of the frontage improvements.
And what comments have Vacaville Unified made about this particular proposal?
They've been involved in the development review process from the beginning, representative from VUSD attends all of our development review meetings on a weekly basis, and so they were part and parcel of setting up the agreement between the district and the developer. And they were really relied upon as the developer was making changes to the school site location and configuration to give the city staff advice about what was acceptable to the district. But they've been, they've been with us pretty much every step of the way.
And just to clarify, did VUSD does, does not have the current capability to build a, or any plans to build a school site there?
Yeah, it was shared at a public meeting that was not about... Yeah, it was shared at a public meeting that was not about this project that when they went out for the bond, I think it was last fall or the last election cycle. The thought was that this would be their priority school site, but that bond did not pass. And that's the last time I'm aware of a lot of public discussion about the desire to move forward on the school site.
How many, and maybe this is a question for the developers, how many homes do you all plan on building and selling annually?
And maybe this would be a good time for you to come forward. Yeah, go ahead and come forward. I think there's, you might want to also answer the question about the timing of, of the apartments, market rate. Help, help us understand what that means.
No problem. And my name's Lewis Parsons. I'm here on behalf of Discovery Builders in North Village Development. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. I'll just quickly address some of the questions that have come up. One question was related to apartments. We shifted since the last time we were before you, we shifted the apartments to the south end, right where North Roads Parkway extends to the north. So we'll be putting in the infrastructure and it's going to be site ready for development. There's a lot of factors that go into when you can make an investment or somebody else can make an investment for construction of apartments. You know, there's capital financing, so on and so forth. Our intention by investing the capital improvements for the frontage improvements and having the site there is we want to do it as soon as possible because that's the only way we're going to get our return on infrastructure investment. But just like a guarantee for, you know, how many homes you're going to build one year or when you're going to build the apartments. It's a lot of it has to do with market conditions. If you look historically though, as we've built this project out over the last 20 plus years, you know, we did have, once we got the infrastructure improvements for what I call North Village Villas in AP1, a few years after, while the market really fell apart, it was 2008, 2009. Once the market turned, we were able to build that project. But historically, if you look at our absorption, we've been averaging anywhere on the low end for 60 to 70 starts a year to sometimes even 100 to 150 starts a year. So that, you know, gives you an idea of how long we anticipate build out of the project. But the goal of shifting the apartment site as far south as we can, right across from where North Village Parkway is, is our goal to get our return on investment based on the infrastructure we're putting in is to get those apartments built as soon as we can market wise. The, there was another question pertaining to the school site. We do have a memorandum of understanding with the school district. It's been amended. Again, there was discussion, we, we were prepared to sell the school site to the school district. Originally, we have a separate agreement for fees. We've relocated it to the north. It's our understanding that the, the school district is intent on acquiring the site, is likes the fact that it's outside of any airport land use compatibility issues. And so that MOU we followed as far as payment of fees, modified it for the relocation. And it's, it's an agreement that, that's been in place that we're in concert with the city and the, the school district on. As far as disclosures, we understand there's been a, a lot of discussions and concerns about disclosing to people what the land uses are going to be. So through this entitlement process, we've agreed to put up signage, do a whole disclosure, put it in our apartment, disclose it to the apartment homeowners, disclose it to all the buyers, just so everybody knows what the vision is and what's anticipated. Cause we certainly don't want a situation where something's getting built where a homeowner doesn't know what the land plan or the, or the product typology is going in. As far as the, the, there was a, the question of the, the density, that just had to do with when there was an underlying that the change had to do with before it was a, a density, a lower density, then we moved the apartment site. And then we've been kind of moving this around in a puzzle piece to, to get the, the unit count that's outlined in the development agreement. So many, many iterations, site planning that we've worked with our consultant on and the city on. But that density change is just a result of shifting the apartments and then moving and changing the density of a previously proposed density. I think I've answered all the questions, but if not, I'm here, our team's here. And I did want to say that, you know, we have really appreciated working with staff on this. They've done an incredible job. We've been to many hearings, going back to, to the end of last year. And we're, we've, we've continued to modify the project, hopefully in response to all the concerns we've heard at the hearings. But we're here, our team's here. The, the CEO of the company is here and he can make comments as well, but we really appreciate it. We're here to answer any questions.
And so, and I'm sorry to clarify, how many units per year?
I'm sorry, I, I would say a good average, if I probably win it, you're going to look at about 100 units per year of construction. Now there's 244 apartments planned, so the total unit count is about 1,250 units, 244 of those are apartments, 100 units per year, up and down. There's market conditions, that's in a stable market. Rough years are going to be, you know, we probably, in the downturn, we're probably half of that. So that's where I'd say, but part of that too is, you know, we have a lot of work ahead of us. Granted, once this gets approved, we have an enormous amount of infrastructure design we have to do. We have to do a bridge crossing of Gibson Canyon Creek. That whole process with the city, just to get to the point where we're ready to start a home development. We're still a few years out right now if we, if we start today. So that's all factored into sort of timing, so on and so forth. So 100 units a year is the, sort of the, everything's going fine. There's no sort of issues in the economy and we're able to just go recording a map phase by phase.
So that expected to take how long to build out based on the current plan?
I would say, you know, if, if things, if things, there's, there's no issues with anything with the apartments and with the infrastructure implementation, I'd say to finish building this project, you know, best case scenario would be about 15 years, you know? And then I think that's the purpose of the, the request for a 20-year development agreement extension because of the unknowns of, of, and the realities of, of a project of this magnitude.
I think it's just interesting because we always hear about a housing crisis and everybody needs housing. And it's just interesting, like it, it, to me, it just seems it's more like the issue is really profit margin, right? And being able to sustain a business model while people are still having, while we still have this quote unquote housing crisis. And I do know that people need homes, like, so that actually brings me to my next question. So here, can you explain a little bit more about the, the, sorry, very low, low income, medium income? And what does that exactly included in? And is there any preference to Vacaville residents, particularly folks who are ready for a home that are getting their lives back together, opportunity house?
Yeah, so, so the, you know, the, we heard, you know, there, there's no affordable housing ordinance in place that the city has. But what we did is we looked at the single family units that we're proposing. And what we've done is looked at roughly, you know, anticipating what's typical, providing a 10% affordable housing component. When you look at our roughly single family units that we're proposing. And what this does is we've looked at the ability to build an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit that then is rent restricted based on the area median income of moderate, low and very low. And what happens is that becomes a deed restriction on those unit. It runs with the land. And so if the unit is rented out, whether it's an ADU or a JADU, depending on that income category, that's the maximum amount of rent that can be charged. So we've done this in multiple jurisdictions to provide an alternative affordable housing type for the public. And what it also, and another concern that was brought up is the, the city needs to meet their RENA numbers. And so this avenue also allows the city to, to meet those numbers as well.
So the apartments, do those have any income restricted?
No, the apartments are planned to just be straight market rate. The, the, the JADUs and the ADUs are attributable just to the single family lots that we're proposing.
And ADU is my understanding is one of the challenges with that, while it's supposed to increase access to rentals is that there's nothing to require anybody to rent that unit out on their personal property. So while there may be a deed restriction, it doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that they have to rent it out. So it's, it seems like one of the critiques of that is just that we're kind of checking a box.
No, we understand, I understand that. And, you know, it's, I mean, if, if, I mean, any property owner, whether or not it's deed restricted or not, if, if it is an affordable housing in it, if you have an affordable housing project, you're not mandated as the owner to rent it out. But this does provide, and, and one of the things that we've seen, even if it's not a deed restriction and we have, albeit anecdotal, but we have many projects where we've done these sort of 10% ADU requirements. You know, let's say for a 100 unit project and you have, you have an option and we do 10% JADUs or ADUs. It turns out that the buyer profile, a lot of people are looking for that option, looking for the ADU or JADU, whether it's something they want to have as additional income stream, you know? Or, and then what you see a lot is you, you know, many, many cases, I mean, we have one case where we had one plan type and it was a, one of the four plans and every single plan that accommodated the ADU or JADU, every single person bought it because you have the multi-generational family where somebody's coming in and they're actually not being charged rent. And so that's almost the best, you know, affordable housing when, when you, you can have a parent or, or somebody like that living there. It's got its separate, you know, kitchen, separate, separate ability to live independent of the house. So yes, there are critiques about how do you force somebody to rent a unit? But if the unit is rented, it will be restricted. And then even if they are not deed restricted, they still provide an affordable housing alternative, which is why you've seen this, you know, mass of state legislation. You've seen these things get implemented all throughout the, all, all over the place. So there's why you're going to see more and more of these. And we think it's innovative and we think it's, it's a good thing to providing housing diversity and an affordable housing alternative.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. One last question. I apologize. Are the apartments, staff, are the apartments part of the turnkey requirement?
No, the park, the two parks would be built by the developer and then dedicated to the city. The apartments would be constructed as a private development project.
Why can't apartments be part of the turnkey in phase one?
The turnkey is really in, in exchange for certain public benefits. But it's just basically a benefit to the city that rather than collecting park fees over a 20-year period and, and frankly, letting people down as those fees very slowly collect and we're going to go build a park with them and it takes a very long time. The turnkey park allows that park to be there at a prescribed time. I'm not aware of cities doing turnkey apartments. It's a very different type of development.
Thank you.
Councilmember Silva asked majority of the questions I wanted to ask. My only concern that I, I still have is kind of like what we talked about regarding the designation of a school site and the terminology that's used because a school can possibly never go there if they never pass their bond measure. And with the state allowing school districts to convert their land to housing if they deem fit. So that could be designated school, sold as a school site by realtors. And then come back, school's like, hey, now we're going to build Vacaville housing there. Now you have a 100-unit apartment complex there where they thought it was going to be a school. So my only question is like, is it possible to change the language and not stating that as a reserved school site? And change it just like school district land or school property or school district property?
The reason why it's like that is because there's a MOU between the developer and the school district that says the developer is obligated to show how this lot would be subdivided in the event that they don't take the land. So, so the reason for that designation is because VUSD wants them to show that in the, in case that doesn't happen.
Okay, well, I mean, I deal with MOUs all the time. That's not an enforceable, that's not an MOA. It's MOU, it's just understanding, it's not an actual binding thing. So it's, yeah, I mean, cause how it shows up on a map, that's how, that's up to the city. That's not, that's not a school district thing. So I don't, my concern is I don't want to be sold as, hey, a school's going here in like X amount of time. Even if they don't give dates, say, hey, the school district's going to build a school here and it never happened or gets converted to apartment. So like for our side of things or when the signage goes up, be like, hey, this land's reserved for Vacaville Unified School District, not specifically stating this is a school going here. That's my only concern because I know that was an issue in AP1 where they thought a school was going there and then didn't go there. And a lot of families were kind of upset.
I thought a school was going there too. And then I remember, I had a full head of hair back then, but I remember, and then it had to do with the compatibility with ZE, I think, where there was a little corner. And then the school district was like, we're not comfortable with this site. And so what I can say is, you know, we look at this, you know, honestly, as, you know, we think a school in this area would be an incredible benefit, not only to the community, but to the project. The issue is, is, you know, and your guys' hands are tied and ours are as, as far as what, what, what is, what truly is Vacaville Unified going to do? What we can, can commit is that we have worked with them on identifying an acceptable sized school site. We've also, you know, have, it's a very old MOU and so the, the, it's, you know, you know, they, they would probably be in their best interest to acquire it, you know, and then do. But what they do with that land ultimately, I don't, we, we don't control. But we, we are certainly going to fulfill our obligation if they so choose to exercise it in providing them their designated school site.
Yeah, I completely agree that there does need to be a school out there because most of those kids go to school out here on this side of town anyways. It's just more of like how it's sold to the development.
Sure, and I, you mentioned, we, we have no issue with, with, if, if, if it's up to this, if the city would like us to say, you know, future school site, so on and so forth. The issue is, is until the school board decides that they're going to acquire it and, and, and do it, that's, they're the ones that would make the decisions on it. But we'll disclose everybody and, and we'll, we'll certainly disclose that it's an option. It's, you know, and, and I was, I was personally involved in the land change for North Village Five where that school site had to go away and people were not happy and I understand why. And, 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 and we had to show them we were moving the site and so on and so forth. So I totally understand what you're saying, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, so my thing is until the school board approves that a school will be built there, like, hey, we're doing RFP and getting everything, that'd just be designated as VUSD property or land or something, not specifically a school. That's the only thing I'm asking. Other than that, yeah, I appreciate all the different concessions you made with the ADUs and moving the apartments to phase one. Those are all things we're hopeful for. And so, yeah, I appreciate those. Thank you.
One second, I'm going to call out to Vice Mayor Wiley remote, see if she has any questions.
Thanks for, thanks for checking. I do have just a couple of things. A while ago, when you were presenting, you said something about a 20-year extension. Is it 20 or is it a 25-year extension?
I believe it's a 20-year extension. I could be wrong. Yeah, 20 years. And that would, to reiterate, that would be, you know, granted, we get the approval. We would then, given the, the size of this, be, be moving as quickly as possible.
All right. And then I think the phase one started in 1995, so it's already been 28 years that you're, you've been working on that. So is the number of houses in phase one greater than the number of houses in phase two?
Yes, it is. It's, it's, it's greater by a few hundred units.
All right. And then the ADUs and the JADUs for deed restricted affordable housing, I do think that's a good idea. I do wonder, like if some, you said the ones were purchased early on, if that had that option. So will you also offer that as a option for people who are buying houses that are not slated for deed restricted? Will you say, well, okay, I can put the ADU in this lot for this amount of money or not?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, our, our intention, this is, this is going to be the deed restrictions. But as, as, and I mean, it's amazing what's happened. Gosh, I, I'm having a hard time figuring out where to look, so I'm staring at a speaker right now. So what we're going to be doing is, is certainly offering this as an option. And, and what we found, as I mentioned, is whether or not it's deed restricted, you, you see a buyer profile looking for an ADU or JADU. And, and I think that's why there's so much discussion of this and so much legislation on this. So to answer your question, we'll be going through design review processes with the, the city on an individual phase by phase basis. But we certainly are going to be responding to the market. And I believe as development continues and these JADUs and ADUs become more. And I believe as development continues and these JADUs and ADUs become more prevalent, you're going to see a lot more of these in the marketplace, just market driven.
All right. And then I, you know, the other council members had a lot of the same ideas or comments that I did, so I won't reiterate everything, except, you know, it is important to build the apartments as soon as feasible. But I understand that you are not in the business of doing that. You have to get a builder who commits to that project. So, um, because that is an issue when they're coming in at the last minute, so.
And I can say too, that, you know, we are apartment builders and operators. And that is a, um, our apartments that are out at North Village are successful. It's a, it's a low vacancy rate. There's just, there's many factors that, that, that determine whether or not those projects go forward. But, you know, when, in speaking to the owners and their comfort level from shifting the apartment site to the south, showing that we're going to be doing a significant amount of site improvements to make that site ready, it's going to be in our best interest from an investment standpoint to move forward or get somebody to move forward with development of that apartment project as soon as possible. So, um, you know, and, you know, the one thing I can say here is if you look back at North Village, we were doing a few phases and then we ended up, once we had the infrastructure improvements on Haven Hill at, uh, North Village AP1, that's when we built the apartments. And so apartments are, are an important aspect of the housing diversity we're proposing here. And our intention is not only to get the infrastructure improvements in place initially with AP2, but also move forward with those apartments as soon as possible.
All right. And then the last comment, you, you were talking about the swim club because that was an issue before and the density of the swim club compared to other things. But, and also the need to talk to people about it. But you won't really be surveying anyone until people are buying the houses. Is that correct? Or who, who are you surveying to find out about the interest in the swim club? Or is basically the swim club just, you know, not going to happen?
No, it, it, what, what, what we've said all along is it, it, you know, because it's going to be a private swim club. And so one of the things that we've negotiated with the city is upon approval here, within 180 days, we have to do a public outreach and to under, to gauge the interest and, uh, understand, you know, who wants to have a swim club? Who wants to be assessed for maintenance of a swim club, so on and so forth? One of the issues we had though is locating it in an acceptable place and, uh, working with staff and, 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 and understanding where it could go. The swim club, we have other areas that are non-residential that are in the business park area, which is in AP1, which we, we, which will now allow a swim club. So it's outlined in condition number six. And then prior to the second small lot final map, which is going to be at the infancy in AP2, we're going to really understand the economics and understand the, the viability of, you know, the, the community wanting to participate and have this private swim club. Because this is really going to be long-term, the obligation of the homeowners. So we certainly don't want to tell the homeowners, you have to maintain this private swim club if there's not an interest to do it. And so instead of waiting, you know, till we're, our second phase, uh, small lot final map for AP2, within 180 days of this approval with city staff, we'll have an understanding of, uh, the appetite and desire to have a private swim club. And then if it appears there's support and there's desire to do it, we'll be moving forward with implementation of it.
And so you think you'll have a pretty realistic idea of the cost that the homeowners would have to bear when you ask those questions initially?
100%. And it also has to, you know, partially the scope, you know, here's, here's, here's the types of options you have for a swim club. Here's the type of amenities, here's the cost. And so we certainly want the homeowners to weigh in on this before they obligate themselves. And so what that ultimately looks like is part of that outreach process that we've agreed to go through, which is something that we've agreed to, uh, to implement that process since our last hearing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Richie.
Thank you so much. First and foremost, I'd like to appreciate the ability for the builders to really work with our city staff for a long portion of time, our planning commission, now the council. This is like a half-century kind of partnership. I mean, 50 years, it's a long time. So kind of forward, going forward, it's, it's going to be a kind of amazing project. Councilman Wiley and actually Jason touched on two things. The ability for people to really address, just because we're doing the portion of inclusionary housing of 100 units, that doesn't mean people can't take advantage of the shifting landscape of housing in America, especially in California, where abundant amount of people are actually asking for ADUs. There's two groups, like the low, very low and moderate income. Those are your teachers. Those are your, a lot of the, um, students. Your students come back to college, can't afford. That's kind of putting an actual person to that low and very low income. There's a lot of people that actually work at city level, city staff in our public, public works that can qualify. That bar isn't, isn't as, I mean, there's a lot of people that could benefit from that. It's not, that number needs to have a visual place. It's a very important thing for that housing. This is a great article out today, uh, the Wall Street Journal, talking about there's a major shift in housing in America. They're starting to actually reduce the average size houses. People don't want 7,000 square foot houses anymore. They're starting to reduce the sizes and actually eliminate the living room or family room to make it more cost effective with adding that. Those two groups are getting affected, the young and everyone 55 and over. The majority of people that are coming houseless in California are actually 55 and over that are losing the buy-in power and earning power in their later years. It's a horrible trend in California of who's actually on the streets. It's not as many young kids you think. It's a lot of people just can't afford the quality of the cost of living. So having ADUs more accessible in our community would really benefit, especially with something like 25, 20% of our residents are now at that age level that we got to watch out for. So addressing the ADUs and making it an option for every single home is going to be really important. The swim club, as long as we make sure, like, we ask the full scope, the cost of construction, the cost of maintenance, the cost of insurance, because those can be really expensive. So I want to make sure everyone understands the full cost of ownership of maintaining that, not just building and developing it, because I don't want them to come back 10 years later, probably be probably gone. See, I had no idea what I was paying for as a line item on my property taxes. So I just want to make sure we ask the questions and we're telling them. We highlight every last piece of what could be a cost. Will there be digital security or personal security? These are all things that we need to know. So I don't want them to say, well, you never told us. So it's going to go overboard with the, what is the probabilities? But the, uh, the move from the low density to, to low and medium, that's going to help improve the lot sizes and allow us to build houses that our younger person homeowners are asking for. So, you know, we do need to place a vacuum for the executives. I, I, I rely on myself. We need housing diversification. We need to have housing for the CEOs and for the, the janitors. It's, it's very, it's very important. So the fact we're building properties with lower, higher density, lower footprint, lowering the cost, then offering ADUs, junior ADUs, especially with the proximity to Slough Community College, hopefully that keeps growing, is going to have a lot of fruits to labor. So I just really appreciate, um, when it comes to bringing those products to people, they go get pre-approved, they go in the shop, just really highlight the benefit of what you can do and how it can, just because your, their unit might not meet that inclusionary housing, but the ability to really serve the community, it can be really important. I appreciate everything I was doing and motion to approve.
We're not ready yet. Getting close. I'm sure there'll, I'm sure there'll be more.
Owner of the company.
I'm going to go ahead and open up to the floor. Thank you. Anyone wishing to comment on the side? Hold on a second.
Thank you. Hello again. As you know, I live in North Village. Quite frankly, I'm disgusted with this whole plan and project. There are 1348 homes existing that nobody has thought about and nobody's considered. To think that a dog park is going to create quality of life is an insult. The original plan of North Village was to attract a shopping center, a market, somewhere where we could buy groceries. Right now, we're an island out in North Vacaville that nobody seems to care about or think about. They just want to shove more low-income housing into our neighborhood. And yet, gas is $4.50, $4.95, depending on the day you want. For us to have to drive all the way across town to take our kids to school or to go grocery shopping? I apologize for the shake in my voice. So I completely was prepared, but after listening to the developer and to our planning department, I'm a little rattled. Extending this project for 20 more years is not going to solve your, your housing crisis. There's a reason why there's a housing crisis because it took 28 years to build 1348 homes, 1,348 homes. Had the developer stuck to what they were going to build originally, the 2499, we would not be in this position. So giving them 20 more years on something they've already failed us at is not the answer. Yes, it's great to have ADUs, but we have nowhere to shop. You talk about wanting to bring sustainability to our community. Shopping centers do that. That's where our young can get jobs, their first jobs. That's where we can invest and put our money back into, instead of choosing to go somewhere else or stop in another town, because that's where we happen to be that day. If we're shopping locally, we're investing in our community. Without extending 20 years, there's no rhyme or reason why a grocery store would find our area attractive because it's unstable. They don't know when they're putting in apartments. They don't know when they're putting in these houses with ADUs. So they're going to wait 20 years. That means the people there now who have lived either 10 to 28 are suffering. They're not being considered whatsoever. The school situation, I find it misleading that when the planning commission says that the residents have been notified, the letters are very vanilla. Pardon, I don't know any other way to label it. They don't tell you it's a school or 100 more homes. So when you read it, you don't have any reason to be concerned. You have no reason to, oh, they're going to put in a school. It's not an either or. It's not worded that way. It's not explained that way. When they bring up a dog park, they don't mention that Parks has also said, no, we're not doing a dog park.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Alicia Minion. Okay, so I looked at other cities municipal codes on development agreements. And by the way, development agreements are extremely important. They're so important that the state has a statutory scheme just about development agreements. So it's not just in our municipal code. City banning in their municipal code, here's their statement on development agreements. Development agreements should only be used after careful consideration because they limit the authority of future city councils to react to change conditions. The developer has been locked in to a development agreement for 28 years. They're asking a couple of years early for another 20. Your hands are tied. You're tying the hands of future council members for decades. By the time this thing is done, and I'm not confident, just based on the track record of 20 years, 28 years of what's been built, we have a track record. So I have no reliance on their representations. And I don't mean to be rude, but I'm just looking at their track record. So I expect the same outcome over the next 20 years. And so when you make this decision today, I mean, honestly, I think, I think it should just be a no. This needs to go back to the table. It needs to be renegotiated. A 20-year extension is extraordinary, especially when they've had 28 years. We, at this point, just table it and go back and negotiate those items that the community needs that are absolutely necessary to make that area of town bigger. The prior speaker, I feel, I empathize, I feel for, South Town, it's the same story. You have 15 development agreements. I don't know which, maybe all of them are suffering from the same story. So when, so I have some questions. Number one, these development agreements, they're, they involve millions of dollars. A 20-year additional extension adds incredible value. You're, you're handing over millions to this developer by inflating their land value, by giving this an entitlement. I want something extraordinary in return. We have no guarantee for, for school. You have no guarantee for affordable housing. You have zero guarantees. This agreement's very complex. And I actually would love to hear from our city attorney on, 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 on the opinion on this agreement and why it is that it justifies a 20-year return. Also, I want to know if the developer is going to be utilizing CSCDA skip programming and passing the cost of their responsibility in terms of building infrastructure onto the taxpayer of the homeowners. That would be incredibly unfair. But what I see from this development, you're not getting what you need. And I don't understand why this massive project has been negotiated under one agreement. Is there any benefit city attorney and city council to break this agreement up in pieces, project areas with different timelines, rather than an umbrella with a 20-year term? But I wish I had more time, mayor, and because there's not that many of us. If, after you hear Wendy, but maybe you can reopen it after you ask these questions. I would appreciate it. There's not that many people here, but this is very important project area. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening.
Evening. Wendy Brecken. I live in District One, but Browns Valley area. Like close to, uh, North Village, and so I know some of the issues. I live close to the, the school, Browns Valley, where they're supposed to be going to, but that school is so impacted that of course they go across town. I was going to talk about other stuff, but schools just seems too important. It seems like, okay, this city council has inherited this crazy problem of schools going from neighborhood schools to, um, what do you call it? Across towns, commute schools. So what do you do? Well, the existing fiscal mechanisms are not appropriate. We have a problem with the, the law that says, well, if you get school impact fees, then that means that's by law sufficient, so you cannot deny a project. Well, what about some thinking outside the box and doing some kind of other funding mechanism? I'm thinking mellow ruse or, or, or something like that. There's lots of funding mechanisms to ensure there's a school built because it's been more than 32 years since the school's been built in Vacaville. I don't know. But with that in mind, I agree with Alicia Minion that the development agreement of 20 years is just totally inappropriate because you're locking in for 20 years the existing mechanisms and you're not allowing future city councils or yourselves to think outside the box. As far as where, you're also being asked to do reaffirmation of the SEQA document, the EIR that was done 28 years ago. I, that might be a record. I mean, maybe staff can answer that. But that's a long time. When that document was created, there was nothing out there in North Village, nothing. I mean, maybe Kaiser, I don't know, you would know, mayor. But I think the business park wasn't there, nothing was there. So have things changed? Have circumstances changed? That's, that's the law. I mean, they're citing 15164A, that addendum can be done to an environmental document if there's some changes to the project or, or the conditions. But if 15162 applies, um, that's where you cannot do an addendum. You have to do a supplemental EIR or another type of document, a negative deck or what have you. So, so when does that occur? Do you have any kind of substantial change in the project since 95? We're already talking about substantial changes to the project. Has there been, um, has there been a substantial change or increase in severity of impacts? Yeah, we're talking traffic impacts since 1995. We're talking fire since the mega fire. We're talking fire since the mega fires of last year and the year before, 2020. We're talking parking. I mean, of course, there's been substantial changes. Of course, there shouldn't be an addendum, and these things should be studied. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Council. My name is Brandon Klein. I'm here to speak about just a couple of, you know, issues that I have with this plan. But first, I want to say, 12 years ago, my wife and I bought our first home in North Village. And when we bought our house, we were told there was going to be a school in Area Plan 1. And we looked at a beautiful swim club, and it was all very convincing. And, you know, just a little riff on Councilman Ritchie's comment earlier during the last item. You said in 20 years, you're going to be an old man. Yeah, well, I will be as well. And my kids won't be able to go to a school in North Village. I now have two little girls who we drive clear across town every morning, and it's a bit of a nightmare. When we bought our house, that was not what we were told was going to happen. So what planning is about is balancing the past, and we're the past, okay? Planning's about the future. But at the end of the day, there's very little for right now for those of us that are stuck in the right now. That's the, there's, the balance in this plan is off by extending it 20 more years. The world that I come from in law, there's got to be good cause justification. It has to be clear and convincing as to why you're breaking the benefit of the bargain. Why would you come to a judge and just say, hey, I need, you know, another month till I can get that motion in? No, you, you know, people rely on your representations, that what you said you'd do, you'd do. So to the extent that you're looking at that balance in planning and thinking about those of us who took everything we had, and we bought our first home, and we were told that we would have these beautiful things, where this 20-year extension puts us in a 20-year limbo. And so I think at the end of the day, I mean, you're hearing a lot of things that are illusory. 20 years is a long time for things not to happen. And we've waited 11 years, 12 years, rather, and nothing's happened. We don't have a store. We don't have a swim club. We don't have a, we don't have a school. My little girls make the best of it, but I don't think it's fair to those of us who bought our homes, and we were told that we were going to get something that is really, it feels like, you know, fool me once kind of thing. You fooled me about the school the first time, but this condition on the school saying that if they don't build a school, we're going to build 100 more units. It's taken 50 years at the end of the day for this plan to come to fruition. What is so special about this little sliver of Vacaville that it's going to be 50 years to develop it? So with that, I urge you to think very clearly about, you know, what are we getting for this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. You know, sometimes you have to adjust. And I listened to Alicia and the other speakers. This wasn't my gig tonight. They're right. And I hear the council say, well, it's the school district's responsibility and that. No. This council carries a lot of weight in the community, as does the school district. You could lock these things up and say, we need a détente now. And you, as a city council, can lock things up and say, nothing's moving until we get an agreement here with the school district. All of you have been saying this, that we need the schools. Now it's time to use your political weight. And don't hide behind what the responsibilities on paper for the school district and the city. Been around a little bit, and I know that you have power that you have not exerted. And I'm not saying being violent militant, but pretty darn close, because this school stuff has been going on. And I've only been here since '96, and it has never been good while I've been here. So don't tie up the next council, because if you guys don't step up and get this cured, we're probably going to have new players, maybe. I'm not threatening you. I'm just saying, if you can't get the job done, get somebody in that can get the job done and get to work on this school issue. This is not right. I hear, oh, the children, the children. Well, the children are up there right now. And there's ways around these things, and I just respectfully ask, I'm not being disrespectful to you, but, man, you got to get this done. And that means, if you mean you got to jam them up in a meeting with the school boards, all of them, do a big roundtable, then you do it. You take some water and donuts in there, lock the door, and nobody comes out till the solution's ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I had not intended to talk about this either, but hearing everyone else speak about it, I realize this is exactly the sort of thing that I mentioned to you, ladies and gentlemen. This is what's important to running the city, these kind of decisions, not all that other stuff that we go through excruciating hours earlier because people want to grandstand about social issues. This is the nuts and bolts of running the city, and it's been getting overlooked because people are spending so much time on other things. They need a school. It was promised years and years ago. These people are right. You have the power to move it along. Don't lock it up for another 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? I'm going to close public comment on this item. And I know that there's probably a few comments that you might be able to answer. Will?
I had a couple that I took notes about. The first thing about the development agreement process, it is really true. It is a negotiation between the city and the developer. This project didn't start with a fresh DA at day one. This is a proposed amendment to an existing DA. So I guess I would say I would agree with the speaker that development agreements are a very powerful tool. This one comes to you as an amendment. The developer still does have vested rights under the existing DA. And I think that's maybe a distinction from a project that's coming to you for the first time with a fresh DA. The second thing I just want to clarify, I heard someone saying that this was just about getting a dog park. The developer is obligated under the development agreement to construct a six-acre neighborhood park with all the park improvements to the satisfaction of the city of Vacaville. And they also are required to construct the two-acre dog park, and they're in proximity to each other. So it's eight acres of public park amenities. It's not just a two-acre dog park.
Quick question on that.
Of course.
That was at 50% build-out?
Correct, yes.
Is there any consideration for triggers such as 50% build-out or by a certain date so that build-out doesn't end up being 10 years, and then somebody's been waiting for 10 years, is waiting for another 10 years?
I understand the concern. The trigger is really related to, there's some nexus between like what the developer would be paying in park fees as the development builds out, that typically unless there's a turnkey park, we're waiting like maybe for 20 years to have the amount of money to go build a park. So the 50% threshold was set, because there's some nexus between how much park fee the developer would have had to pay the city if they were not doing the turnkey park.
Does it preclude somewhere at some point, maybe adding a trigger to a development agreement? Or the city being able to provide other grants or funds to expedite park development? Parks are what people want.
Oh, definitely.
They look there, and they don't want to see an empty lot. So I'm just trying to figure out, how do we do developments and not wait for, you know, for the extended amount of time?
So the development agreement, it obligates both parties, the city and the developer, but I think that I would probably want the developer to speak to what they would offer or share related to the idea of putting the trigger based on years and not units, because it's not something staff discussed with them.
This is not, this is not an open discussion, public. So what we're going to do is we're going to continue with the questions, but if you could come forward and maybe speak to that.
Thank you. The question is, is there, if there's a time that goes by, would that trigger it? You know, I don't, you know, our goal is to have that park built by, I think it's 582 permits, but the reason we sort of selected that is because where the park location is, we got to get the infrastructure to it. But I mean, if you, so there's some practicality of it, but I don't think, and I have to look at the owner, I don't think we could say 582, 10 years or 582, because that's halfway through the project. We wouldn't be, I don't think that would be problematic. I mean, the improvements would have to be there, but I'm confident, based on where we're at in our design, that we would be at that park frontage improvement within the next 10 years or within the first 582 units. So it's, you know, it'd be 20, you know, the way we looked at it is, do it by half. We quantified how many units would get us to where the infrastructure was there, so a road and utilities were stubbed to the park. That's why we came up with the number.
And does the apartments count towards that?
No, it's 582.
Just the unit?
Yeah.
And then, can you explain what the process would be based on the comments? You go through the process on the pool, and it doesn't, doesn't get interest, it's not feasible, you know, it's...
Proposal in the, in the land use designation where we're proposing.
Want to continue with answering any of the questions?
There was a concern about the addendum.
Yes.
But what the California Environmental Quality Act requires us to do is that one environmental document has been prepared that analyzes the impact of the project. That environmental document is good for the length of the project. If there is development that occurs around the project, the environmental document doesn't have to describe. Let me start over. If there's development occurring around the project site throughout the years of the life of a project, and then a project decides to make some changes and reevaluate the impacts associated with that project, SEQA does not require the developer to analyze surrounding development. That would be SEQA in reverse. The point of SEQA is to evaluate, does this particular project, within the boundaries of this project, create any environmental impacts in the surrounding area? Not the surrounding area, does that create any impacts on this project? And so that's why we took a look at the analysis in a specific way, is there incremental change that occurred for this project compared to 1995 was the addition of 100 units. And through the analysis determined, that wasn't a substantial change that warranted doing a whole, brand-new analysis for just 100 units.
I think probably another question for you, sir, is going to be, you were using averages, good, you know, high-yield years, recession years. Obviously, we went through a tremendous great recession, and now we're in a resurgence of needing housing. And so can you, can you say for certainty that you need 20 years? Because if you were saying 15, and we're in such a shortage, I'm trying to look at this and say, how do we not extend things indefinitely and actually try to meet marks that really are the state saying, we're in crisis, we're in an emergency, and can we be more aggressive? I understand that it's going to be market-driven, but between the market, it's a housing crisis. So is there a way to do this and not go beyond 15 years? Development agreement going to be done?
Yeah, I think, I mean, when we, when we looked at, and, you know, somebody did talk about the track record, and if, and if you look at the date that the development agreement was approved, you know, one thing that, you know, I'm sure you guys are aware of and staff is aware of, is there was a whole host of things we had to do in order to start land development out there. There was backbone infrastructure, but there was also a bunch of regulatory permits. It took forever. It took a long time where we had to purchase the off-site mitigation. Now, the good thing is, we've done all the environmental mitigation for the site. But one of the complications we have right now, it, when you look at where we're finishing out, what we call Unit 7, we are now going to be bridging a creek and going to the north. And that process in and of itself, from a design standpoint, and just process with the cities that I mentioned, that's going to take years if we really, if things happen quickly from plan check, implementation, and that's before we start Phase 1 grading. So, you know, I would like, you know, I would like to say, and also from a, from a developer standpoint, you know, we want to move this forward as quickly as possible. But I think anyone looking at the scope and scale of what we're talking about, which is 244 apartments, over 1,000 units, tens and tens of million dollars' worth of infrastructure, it sounds crazy, but I mean, it, you know, if everything's optimal, which I don't think it's going to be for the next two decades, that's when you could probably do it in 15 years, there's probably going to be a slowdown. So which is why we're saying 20 years, and we just want to be, we've been transparent with staff. They understand, they've looked at our absorption, they know what it, you know, just going through a set of improvement plans with the city takes a year to two years just to get it going. So that's the reason for the request, because it's just a realistic timetable, we feel, to get this built.
I just don't want to see this to be a 48-year project. I'm just saying.
No, I understand.
Councilmember Silva, did you have a question? Because I have some comments, though.
I have a question.
Questions?
Thank you. So I want to go to the comments regarding commercial development, and I'll direct this to the city manager, but I'm thinking maybe, maybe appropriate for a certain director to maybe comment more on the economic development component of it all. So out there, it can be considered that there's possibly a food desert, you know, a lack of different commercial amenities that are for that area. And it's kind of a complex area, because you have residential, you have commercial, you have initiative for more, larger manufacturing with respect to biotech, you have the health care area. What, has, number one, has there been any interest in companies moving in and establishing any type of commercial business in the currently zoned areas? Number two, based on the information, what, actually, let's start there. What is that? What's your take or insight on that?
So with regards to interest in bringing a shopping center into that particular area, I know that our economic development team has been talking to folks in the past few years, but I can tell you from my own experience that shopping centers, or particularly grocery stores, they come to neighborhoods based on the number of units in a given area. And it's a big number. And so they don't really look at an area until there's a certain number of units in that particular geographic area. And right now, those numbers aren't there just yet, according to the data that, you know, that we've been talking to them about. Is there opportunities? Certainly. And that's why I think you'll see that with the Green Tree specific plan, for example, which can also be an argument that there is a desert in that area, that that was included as part of that particular specific plan. Are there opportunities? Certainly. And our economic development team will constantly field questions and inquiries related to that. There was a particular designation in this particular plan, and I will leave that to our planning department to talk about that, if you like, as to what the overall vision was. But at this present time, we have not had any immediate inquiry.
And so you mentioned a number. What is, what is that quote-unquote, lack of a better term? What's that trigger point? What are they? And it's not just units, it's the median income for the area as well?
That's a part of it. But generally speaking, I mean, it ranges, I mean, and it's been a while since I've known this number, but it's anywhere from, you know, 5,000 to 7,000 units.
So even if this gets built out, that still wouldn't hit that number? So why do we still have a zone for commercial?
Well, because there could be plenty of other uses that could, you know, occupy that zoning. It's not just for shopping center purposes, grocery stores.
And okay, so your comments were focused on grocery stores, that particular business model, not necessarily other?
So our commercial, our commercial designations, and the planning department staff over there can speak to this in more depth, but those allow for a wide variety of different, you know, commercial retail uses, not just grocery stores. And I think that that's to the point that they were making about the private swim club, is that, you know, that's another potential user for those non-residential designations.
Can someone, thank you, can someone comment on what the...
Can someone, thank you, can someone comment on what the, what the expected amount for a pool, private pool membership would be? What would those estimated rates be?
You know, honestly, we don't have exactly what it is because it's a, the scope of the, the private pool has to be determined. But based on certain information we have with communities, and it also has to depend on how many participants. So there's so many different factors that go into it. But I would, I would, you know, just throwing it out there and with, with all these asterisks that it's, it's not analyzed. What I've looked at is, I mean, you'd probably be looking at north of a $400 assessment per month. But again, there's a total amount of different factors. Those people would have to opt in, more people would opt in. And then, and then also scaling of what that swim club would look like.
Okay, thank you. The, the staff, so the concept of dog parks and whatnot, is that, were those particular amenities based on feedback from elected representatives and surveys and outreach with the neighborhood, the neighbors?
The park, park planners from the community services department assisted with the design of the parks based off of their master plan.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I think the, the other comment, sorry, can I make comments or? Okay. So I think I need the, the developers to understand that there is significant mistrust with the way business was done in the past. There, every single person that I personally know out there says the same thing. I was promised a school. We were told that there will be a school. I haven't, I personally would like to have a conversation with Vacaville Unified, just to gain further understanding. We, I heard comments about a year ago or the last time we were here. It feels like, wow. But about their interpretation of the data and the need or the ability to support a school. I don't, I, I don't know if the, that, I know you're just estimating, so, and I, you know, I do want to apologize for kind of putting you in that spot. But, you know, let's say it's even a $300 a month fee for a private pool. I think when we put things on paper, that's where we walk into the same issue that we had in the past, where for whatever reasons, when people read what they read is that, oh, I was, we were told that there's supposed to be a pool, we were told that there's going to be a school. And, and then when those don't happen, there's not just mistrust. The mistrust isn't necessarily directed to the developer, but mistrust is directed to us as electeds. The mistrust is directed to city staff in that sense. The mistrust is directed towards, towards our school. And all we sit here and do is just keep blaming each other. And I think there's, there is a significant lack of understanding how things work within policies, something that we're constantly learning as laws evolve, how we, how we mitigate those and understand and run with those. The concept of economic development, we hear it all the time. How come the cities didn't put this business in or that business in? Well, one, the cities don't put businesses in, so then why wouldn't a person do that? Well, the same reason why I can't put in a shopping center, because I don't have the money to do it. I don't have the money to sustain it. And I'm not confident if I put my money out there that it's something that the surrounding community would be willing to support. And we, and part of it, the economy, like, you know, we talk about the economy, things are always changing. There's always, there's a lot of different factors into that. But I, I do have one final question. How, how does this particular proposal fit into SB 330? And that's maybe, I don't know if that's a staff, errant question or city attorney question?
This wasn't filed as an SB 330 application. I mean, this file came, this project came in four, four years ago. There is, the same developer has filed an SB 330 application for North Village Area Plan 2 that's sort of a backup plan, should this particular version of the project not move forward. So we do have an SB 330 for this project site, but it's an independent application from the one that's here in front of the council this evening.
So okay, so just one, one, thank you, one additional point. The apartment concept, those are market rate, you know, depending on different opinions. Are there any low-income units in that particular area in North Village? Are there any subsidized units in that area? To my knowledge, there is not.
I don't, I'm not aware of any.
Are you speaking about Area Plan 1?
Something about what's currently there. Is there any?
Not, not to our knowledge, no, there aren't.
Okay, so what was there? So the, the, going back to the apartment concept, I think that in itself, like, you know, we're saying that it's part of Phase 1, but it's very clear to me that it doesn't have to be built as part of, we're putting it as part of Phase 1, but it does not have to be built by Phase 1. It doesn't have to be built at all, ever. Now, based on other conversations we had and the trend that we've seen in Vacaville, we continue to build apartments. There's certain developers are able to put them up pretty quick. I don't know the rent rates or their occupation rates, excuse me. But all of that in itself, we, we know based on the data that all types of housing is needed, which is echoing what Councilmember Ritchie is saying. I do like certain aspects of this, so I don't want that to get lost. I do appreciate the comments and agree about the ADU concept and how maybe it's not necessary another family, it's within your own family. I can see that particular need to address that. But with those other concerns, I personally, I need to digest this another, a little bit longer. So if, but I'm curious to see what the rest of the council has to say.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, thank you. Just a follow-up with the mayor and some of the public comment regarding the development agreement. Just for a reminder, people here, how many units is going into Lagoon Valley? And how long was their development agreement? And how, how many units are going to Green Tree? And how long was theirs?
I'm going to look over the city manager. Lagoon Valley is 1,500 units. I don't remember the link, 1,020, something, sorry, I'm looking at you.
1,219.
Say 1,219.
Lagoon Valley?
Yeah.
1,025.
And how long is the development agreement?
So the development agreement wasn't entered into for Lagoon Valley until 2016, and it's a 10-year development agreement. The project was originally approved in 2005.
Green Tree, same thing, number of units, and I think they had a 10-year one, correct?
I think they had a 15-year term and it is, I'm so not good at these numbers on the spot. I want to say it's close to 2,000 units, give or take. And also it has a 300,000 square foot shopping center site.
Yeah, so my question is like, Green Tree, more units, including a shopping center, short amount of time. Lagoon Valley, roughly about the same amount of units and short amount of time also. So what warranted the 20-year? And Lagoon Valley also had to run all the infrastructure from Butcher Road completely across the park. So it's not like they didn't have obstacles overcome there. So what warranted the, the longer development agreement for this, even though it's less units?
So as Melinda explained, that Lagoon Valley started in the early 2000s. So it's probably not the best comparative with Green Tree when staff negotiated with the developer. We were surprised that they didn't ask for 20 years, because that's pretty typical. But they explained that it's a pretty unique site in that it's really an infill project. It's surrounded by development, it has youth services nearby. I mean, it, it is a big lift to do all those frontage improvements, but they were really convinced that based on its location, some of those unique characteristics, they could ask for less years upfront. This project is, frankly, it's a greenfield development at the edge of town. It has a much larger infrastructure lift. I bet the developer was describing factually, it's, it's whole new streets, it's new utilities. The regulatory permitting they described, that is a time sink and that is done. So that's positive for North Village AP2 if it moves forward. But it's a really a different kind of development than Green Tree, because it is greenfield development.
Okay, I was just curious, because most of the difficult items we've had since I've been on council are projects we inherited from 30 years ago. And this is, like I was brought up, where if we push this on for like another 20 years, whoever's council 20 years, I don't plan on being here in 20 years doing this stuff. They're going to probably look back at us and yell at us, like, why did you do this for 20 years? Because then they, then they have to inherit that problem as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Chaba?
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Silva has already touched on the amenities that along. I don't want to go over the apartments and when they're going to be built out like it's going to be like the pool, everything at the end, or the park, I shouldn't say the pool. But I'm looking at the, the items or the portion of this project that would actually improve or contribute to the quality of life of the people who have purchased there. Those items are pushed to the back burner. They're not on the forefront of your plans. And that concerns me. We can't do anything about Vacaville Unified School District. However, that is something that it goes along with promoting the city, our schools. How great are they? How plentiful, you know? I believe some of our schools are housing our children in the hallways again, because they are, they don't have the capacity, they don't have the room for them. Speaking of transporting students from one side of town to the next, because there's nothing close by. Without the transportation being offered like it was 20 years ago or longer, it puts an additional burden on families. I look at this as residents that actually felt, I'm coming to Vacaville, I'm buying my first home. Hey, this is a great spot. All of this is coming. And yet, like my, well, no, I can't do a comparison with my children because schools were closed. But however, can you imagine your child being birthed after you arrive, after you buy your home? And yet, they graduate from college before the, the school that was promised was built or the park next door or down the street really came to fruition. I, I, I have a, I have a concern. I have a problem with this grant to this extension to this amendment. I really do. I hope, and I know we have quite a few permits out there, development agreements. And when we talk about SEQA, it may not require it, but there are things that have happened, that have occurred naturally due to Mother Nature. You would think might have caused some changes to the conditions of the land or the surrounding, or maybe it's more prone now to fires where it wasn't before. So, you know, it bothers me, but I have, I go along with the law, you know? I have to rely upon those who have the knowledge base to say, we're okay there. But it's hard to, to really take that in, that after 20, 30, 40, 20, 30 years, you don't need to do another SEQA. So I am having, holding back on this.
Vice Mayor Wiley, do you have any comments from remote?
Not anything new to add, but all these things are things to contemplate because they are big issues.
Thank you. I just want to, I'll just add a comment on, on the schools. Like if you don't develop an area where you designate a school site, you're never going to have a school. But history tells us, we designate sites and those schools get built. I don't know how, school district isn't here, and I, I would ask them if they were. It's like, how many designated sites do you have land set aside in the city of Vacaville? Where there is no intention, I know there is one near my house, there's no intention to building a school there. And so that's the disappointment. Hard to sit up here and create an excitement for something. We know we need housing. It's the housing product, the missing middle, everything we're talking about. Do we need it? Yeah, we need it. Do we want to wait 20 years? No, we don't want to wait 20 years. Do we, do we want to make sure that there is grocery store nearby? If I lived up there, I would want a grocery store nearby. But I understand that we don't, we're not in the grocery business, so you have to create the environment. How do you create the environment? You have to have the right size growth area. And I know the whole Northeast growth area is a, is a future, but it, again, it, I, I feel the same frustration. I've watched this over time. And, and I, look, I've got friends that live out in that particular area. So I'm familiar with, with the neighborhood. And me personally, it's like, why can't we just? There's other communities that do it. I don't want to, I don't want to just call them out by name, but you drive up and the amenity is there and it causes everyone to want to move there. And so I'm personally not, I mean, I don't have that real satisfied feeling of saying, if we're waiting 10 years for a park, that is, that's not good enough. It just isn't. I think we can do better than 10 years for a park. That's why I, I'm thinking like, I understand the number of units, but how do we achieve the goal of, of community and quality of, of living? Not just where I, I lay my head. And it's everything. It's from the moment you drive in the driveway, you go for a walk with the family or your dog, and there's a place to go. And those are all great things, all great things. And that's completely different than the whole notification, because we've learned a lot from South Town. And I, and I resonate with, with members up here when they, when they say, you don't, we pay into the decisions now into what will be in front of us when we're gone. But that's normal. That's, it's not abnormal to think that we're all going to be here and looking back. The real goal is, is will we feel good about it, looking back, when those who will follow us say, they did right. They did right by the city, they did right by the neighborhood, they did right by the community. So I don't look at this and say that this is a terrible thing, but I am concerned because there's impending, well, we know that there's, you know, there's legislation that ties our hands. We've learned about these things in the last, in the last six months have we learned about roles that sometimes are taken away from us. So how do we get what it is that is best for the community? And that there are wins, so that we don't lose trust. Councilmember Silva has really called out, we've, we've really taken it on the chin. I don't, I think 20 years is too long. I think 50% is too long for a park. I think that there's room to say, give, you know, sharpen your pencil and give me your best shot at making something that's really useful. At the same time, comments, we need, you can't just not have a, a city grow and then have 30 years without a school. If this is the area that's growing, you need a school before you need it now. But I think those are the conversations that we can have as council, but we don't, you know, we're not the school district, so. I don't know if anybody else has any additional comments? And sir, I don't know if you have, if you, if you come back up here and help us, help us with this. You can, you can send, you can feel the sentiment.
Also Albert Cino with North Village. You know, the 20 years really comes from, the project was approved in 1995. It was Mission Peak that had it, then Southern California Edison. Family bought it and entered in a contract in 1998. The, the business park on the west side of 505 was built at that time. The Solano Community College Building was built. There was some infrastructure that was, Quinn, Quinn Drive was built. And then we came in, we worked through all the environmental permits. I did them personally. That took a couple of years, it took four years after 1998, when we closed on the property. And so the first house was built, you know, 2001-ish, you know, that's when the models opened up. And here we are in '23. And so that's all it was, you know, we're not trying to confuse anybody with starts or, you know. We roughly build 50 to 75 houses a year out there. There is a year that we've built, you know, almost 100, but that's usually what it is. You know, we get a small season, you know, eight months, you know, to build and grade. When we get down to our last phase, like we are right now, Bristow out there, you know, we're down to the last, you know, eight houses or so, plus the model. You know, eight houses or so, plus the models, you know, we're hopefully submitting our grading and improvement plans next year, come April. You know, when the regulatory agencies allow us to grade. And the rains are behind us for the most part. We start grading. That takes, you know, four, five, six months. And then start the models again, and so. You know, there was no trickery in that. Usually on, and you were talking about some of the other projects. You know, like Lagoon Valley, I mean, that was 2005. I think they had a vesting tentative map by right. They had 10 years. Without a development agreement, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, that gets you to 2015-ish. They start having discussions about having to have a development agreement that extends it for another 10 years. That's 20 years. And I just saw that they just paved out their first part of their subdivision, what, about a week ago or so, two weeks ago? And so, that's all it was, you know, if it's a couple of years here and there, that, that, that's fine with us. I, I'm not trying to negotiate right at the podium, but we are, where, where our, our road ends, North Village Parkway, we do have, you know. About a little over a half a mile of road that we have to build. We have to build the, the, the bridge across Gibson Canyon. That's probably going to take. Probably two seasons, you know, with plan check and everything else, it's going to be. Two and a half years ish, you know, so right then and there, you know, you're already. 17-ish years or 18 years, and then you're, you know, you're having to build the units out and. You know, if we can build the parks sooner, we will. It's just, right now, there's no infrastructure out there. There's no water. There's no sewer, and there's nowhere to flush the toilets, you know, if there's a restroom. There's no drinking fountains. We just, it, there's nothing, you know, it's, it's not where AP1 is or where you enter. North Village Parkway off the freeway and then drive through where the apartments are and. Where Genentech and Kaiser is and start making your way up the main drag. We have to get into the project. You know, it's probably not appropriate to bring everybody in off of Leisure Town, so, or off of Midway. The other reason is, is there are, you know, a lot of other things that we're doing for the project, you know, besides the park, the dog park. You know, the school site, you know, the school site is, it's, yeah, it's a travesty, you know, I. I, I dealt with it on unit five at North Village, going back, you know, almost 15 years. You know, if you, if you take this Kleenex box, there was a flight path and just a little piece of it. A small amount of square footage, I think it was five or 10,000 square feet in the five acres. Clipped the school site, but because those children are younger than 18 years old. It can, that little bit of the flight path that clipped it with the nut tree, you know, land use compatibility. That contaminated, I, not physically, but it, it contaminated the plan to where it wasn't acceptable. Now, if they were 18-year-old or, or older, then it was acceptable, but they weren't. They're, they're minors, and so. Nonetheless, you know, we, we're going to build a school. We had the park. Eventually, the park got, ended, uh, ended up getting built, but that was the best information that we knew at the time to disclose to the homeowners. You know, from the sales offices and whatnot, and so. You know, it's full disclosure. These are standalone disclosures. It's, they're, they're going to be very, very clear. You know, that whether it's the apartments or the school, but I, I, I personally can't make the school buy. I mean, we have the MOU that allows the site plan to float around a little bit. That's what it allows, and the school district is, is so far. Good with where we have the school located. You know, whether the dollars are there, you know, at the time we get to that area. For the school district, you know, with its bonds or et cetera, if they have the money in the, in the kitty, so to speak, and they have it allocated for that particular school and. Or the next in line, then I hope that they spend the money there, because schools are good for subdivisions and they're good for families, you know, it makes it easier than going across, across town. Some of the other things for the timing on the, on the, the years for the development agreement are. There's some sewer and water infrastructure. We're going to be, we've already tied in a inter, intertie water line that serves. Portions of the business park. That's why some of those large buildings are getting built on the west side of 505. You know, that was all part of this project at one time. We sold off some of the land. That's where some of those big buildings are getting built now and. Off Midway Road, we have to tie in, there's a well on the, on the northeast side of the property of, of Midway. And then we run a water line all the way serving across to where they're going to tie it into, to the business park project, and that'll loop the system. And so, you know, we're not going to be up there for a certain amount of time, but when that does happen, I mean, that's, that's one of the. The concessions that we've given along with parks and, and, you know, trying to work out the swim clubs and. The swim club again, you know, is it Olympic-sized swimming pool? Is it, how many lanes is it? What are the amenities? And so, we're not skirting the issue, but we can't bury the homeowners in a thousand dollar a month assessment, you know? Most assessments are, you know, 50 to $150, so, you know, is another hundred dollars, that's. That's a lot of money. That's doubling it. $150 is more than doubling it, so. You know, if, 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 if the homeowners want it, we're going to work with them to provide it and then make sure that. With insurance and maintenance, I mean, they have to re-gunite the pools so often. There has to be maintenance. There has to be, you know, some type of. Of commitment on the, on the, on the HOA that'll be formed to manage that. The, the association to manage that pool in perpetuity, just so it's not, you know, left and it becomes a failure. We don't, we don't want that either, so.
Well, hold on a second. Mr. City Manager?
I'm happy to wait until he finishes.
I, I think my only last comment question that I don't know that you answered is, is. You, you explained, I think in great detail, kind of your timing to your timeline. But without, I mean, how long do you say it takes you to get up into that area? A couple, couple of seasons?
If we, if we get an approval now, I mean, we're late in the year. I, I'm obviously not going to send the tractors out. We don't even have plans yet that are. At a point where, you know, they're, they're approved or submitted. I mean, we're, we're trying to parallel track some of it, but.
Hold, just hold on, all right? This is, this is not an open forum. Right, okay.
But it'll probably take, you know, two years or so, two years, two seasons to, to span the bridge. You know, to build the bridge, to build the roads, to bring the water, sewer, you know, all the P G N E, the gas and electric telephone. You know, that, that main track, basically four lanes and islands, et cetera.
Is there any, is there any consideration based upon what you've heard, though? I hear your timeline, but your trigger for a, for an amenity like a park. Is there any way to move that forward? Because once you have the infrastructure in there, then, then that doesn't become the issue. It becomes the issue of what's been agreed to.
Yes, I mean, if.
Prepared to speed that up?
I, I am. I mean, if, if that's okay with the city, I mean, and, and that's okay with all of you, I, we can, meaning I have to get.
Right, you have to get there.
I mean, I have to get the streets. There's going to be frontage that's going to be part of the actual neighborhood. And, and, you know, where the school site's going to be, so I have to put the curb and gutter in, so when somebody opens the door, they step off onto the sidewalk.
My point is, and some of the things I'm hearing is what we've experienced before is, if the infrastructure's there. A strategy to have while you're, you're beginning the, the initial neighborhood constructions. Or, you know, just like you're talking in Lagoon Valley, is to say, look what we're building over here, which is a park.
Understood.
Talk about being able to draw the value of the home and the, the people wanting to, to buy. You, you put the park there. I'm trying to figure out how to.
Start the park within a year of getting the infrastructure there.
All right, we're going to wrap this up. I think we've answered it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's any other questions, I'll be available. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
So, a lot of great discussion going on for master plan community. And it's important conversation, and I'm going to try to offer a little bit of, of help.
Yeah, he's got to go.
Can we motion it? Can I make a motion to table this?
He has to go.
That's your prerogative.
Well, I know, I'm just saying from the, from the time period, I don't think we're going to get through this, especially with.
Like the motion to table this to, with some clearer direction to staff to maybe talk back with the.
Yeah, you have a motion, okay.
Is it okay if we give staff a little more?
Well, I think the direction, because you need to go. We do need to table this for another time. With some more, more answers. One of the things I think the takeaway is, more direction is, is how to speed up the park. Think that that's going to have to be a key. Roll call. We have a motion.
I'd like to clarify something. Are you table?
Motion is table.
To a date certain or to just a future date?
To create a, can you pick a date certain?
I think it would be best if we can pick a date certain. I think we, we've heard a few things tonight that we can follow up with the development team to, to clarify. And come back at your.
We have enough.
Next meeting?
Or, or the one after that.
Take off.
Number 12 or?
September 26, I believe.
I think you heard enough about some of the concerns. I don't think it's too far, too much to ask, but. There's some things that are very specific. All right. So we need a, we, we need a roll call? Missing anything on that? We have a motion and a second. So the, the motion, the second is, is to, is to table this to that September meeting. With additional information that you've heard from tonight, work with the, the developer and the owner. And bring it back to council. That's a motion? Well, he motioned it, so we need a different motion. He left, so he. Cause I added to it.
Motion table this to two more.
Take that input.
Taking the input given by the developer and back to.
Second. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Roberts. Vice Mayor Wiley.
Yes.
Member Ritchie. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Mayor Carley.
Yes. All right, thank you. Right, right. The next item that's before us is the, the Four Leaf Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
First item of business is the First Amendment to the Agreement with Four Leaf. Consultant Services related to Building Plan Review and Building Inspection. We have Joshua Motomayer and Aladi Sden from our Community Development Department to give you brief staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Carley and City Councilmembers. We're here to talk about the Four Leaf Amendment, the request before you is authorize a city manager to finalize and execute a First Amendment with the Four Leaf. Who provides consultant services to the Community Development Department. This would increase the existing compensation up to $750,000. And we're also subsequent, in tangent, approving a resolution to amend the fiscal year for 2023-24 to increase it by $450,000. Right, by way of background, Four Leaf provides consultant services to the Building Division. Building Division provides building permitting, inspection services, and plan check review for the city, and sometimes third-party consultants must be used. To supplement staff activity in times of staffing shortage or high volumes of permit activity. And to give you a timeline about Four Leaf, we originally initiated a contract with them in early 2022. At that time, we did not have a chief building official, so they were providing augmented and with larger projects coming down the pipeline for plan reviews. The Four Leaf is compensated as a pass-through. Fully, plan check fees and inspection fees pay Four Leaf services. We recoup 30%, while 70% of the fees goes to Four Leaf to pay for these services. I'm going to hand it over to Alaris to give you some background on the Building Division.
Thank you, Josh. Permit activity within the Building Division remains steady. Going over the numbers for a year-to-date from January through July. We've issued 2,700 permits and have conducted 7,682 inspections. With each inspector averaging about 1,000 inspections, if not more, per month. The Building Division revenue, five-year average, is a little bit over $3.5 million. Over the past several months, the Building Division has encountered staffing challenges. We were down one full-time building inspector between November 2022 through August of 2023. During this time, we operated with only two full-time building inspectors. Normal staffing is three full-time building inspectors. Staffing challenges did create backlog in inspection services. The demand for inspections exceeded the service, the service level the city could provide with only two full-time building inspectors on staff, so. During this time, on average, each inspector was conducting 15 to 20 daily inspection stops per day, which is a significant amount of inspections. For each individual. We are actively working on addressing the backlog of inspections, utilizing creative solutions wherever possible. We recently hired an inspector and filled that vacancy. The full-time building inspector started on August 7th. He's still undergoing training and getting acclimated to our processes. With inspection demands remaining high, we had to pivot and we deployed our hybrid position of plans examiner slash building inspector to the field. We have dedicated him 100% to field inspection, and this will remain his primary function until we can meet inspection demands. As such, we continue to augment staff services with Four Leaf, for plan review and on-call inspection services as needed. In addition, we established funding agreements with three developers and two additional professional firms. To facilitate expedited building inspections to meet the inspection needs for ongoing residential development within the city. The plan check engineer recruitment is at the beginning stages at this point in time, and we anticipate it being filled by December of this year.
Going back to the fiscal impact, so the budget adjustment is to. Adjust the revenue and expenditures by $450,000 for fiscal year 2023-24. This was based on projecting the pipeline projects that may, might be pulled towards the end of this year, and also with the inspection and plan check demand. Will offset the revenue to cover this budget augmentation request. The recommendation this evening is by simple motion to execute the First Amendment and to adopt the subject resolution. And that's the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Can you, can you comment at least from your perspective? How, how quickly you're going to get back to normal, right? I know that you've been under a lot of pressure because of staffing shortages in the different areas. What's, what's the timeline? I, I know this will augment to actually catch up, but what's your timeline?
With some of the changes that we've implemented, including the funding agreements that we put in place. I project in about two months, if not sooner, to get back to inspections being conducted within a reasonable timeframe. Possibly not necessarily within the next day. The goal is to have them within the next day, but within two days max, if at all possible.
So the goal is, and what is a reasonable timeline? That's what I wanted to hear. The ultimate goal would be next day, right? That's, that would be the gold standard. And we know that we're not there right now, so. My, my hope is that we can get there as quickly as possible, but the gold standard for Vacaville is next day inspection, because. It impacts those who are putting projects on hold because they're waiting. Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, can you go back to the slide with the various agreements and costs on? That one, so with 22, 23, they were acting as a chief building official. And then doing all the, I mean, the. Plan reviews and inspections and permits then as well. So for that, that full year was, was that 250, 325,000, 325,000 for that, that year? And then from 2023, 2024 is originally planned for 250,000, but then they want to augment for another 500,000. So what is the significant increase from 325,000 to $750,000?
That's a great question, Councilmember Roberts. So, there, what we did not emphasize was that there was a leave of absence from a building inspector. From November 22 to April earlier this year, when we finally did the recruitment for, to fill that vacancy. So because we had a backlog in inspections and that we're trying to get caught up now. We realized when we originally projected 250,000, that actually wasn't going to be enough to cover us. to cover us through the end of the next fiscal year. By increasing by 500,000, this was based on a five-year average, and we actually took the totals from last year to anticipate what the revenues would be for this fiscal year in terms of plan checks and permit inspections. So the fees that we calculated was based on averages from the previous five years of activity within the Building Division. And we anticipate that because of the projects that have committed in the pipeline, 500,000 would be appropriate to cover the, at least for, for inspections, but also for large plan check projects that are gonna be coming down.
Okay, and then going on to the slide with the number of permits inspection. So if the number of permits and inspection guys completed, how many did Four Leaf actually do out of that?
I did not actually pull that information, but we had them for a few months straight, handling inspections over about two and a half hours.
Did they do a majority of them or?
They were handling 15 to 20 stops per day, if not more, and they were here, um, every single working day during those two and a half months.
Okay, so they did a majority of the inspections for, for you guys?
They did a significant amount. When, uh, we had our leave of absence, uh, they were filling in the, for the vacancy, plus our two full-time inspectors also conducting 15 to 20 stops each per day, if not more.
How many inspectors did they provide?
Only one.
They provided one? How many will they be providing for the 3/4 of a million dollars?
So right now, with what we're asking for to increase the budget is also to cover our plan check services. With our hybrid position going out into the fields, um, they are not conducting some of those plan checks that are happening or being submitted to our offices. Uh, because the inspection demand is so high, we need additional staffing out in the field to be able to address those requests. If we don't do that, it's gonna delay also our plan check process. It appeared, the decision was made to, uh, do that to facilitate the inspection demands and continue with construction projects and utilize Four Leaf services also for the plan checking aspect of it. With our third position being filled at this point in time, uh, we are able to accommodate more in-house inspections and rely more so on plan check services for the third party.
Thank you.
I'm gonna open up to the comment, or the public for comment. And I'll close public comment on this item. And, um, before I ask for a motion, I just, one of the questions and comments I would make, uh, for city manager is, my personal comment is, is, once we get past this crisis, um, I'd like to make sure that as the city is growing, that we have the proper staff so that we maintain the gold standard and a personalized standard, right? And as much as it's, it's okay to outsource when we need to, it's the cost-benefit analysis. But at the same time, uh, to really understand what's going on in the community requires the staff that's, that's intricately connected with other departments, understanding the issues, understanding the, the types of challenges that are very complex that come into your office. And, and they are. They're unique. Some of the standard ones are standard, but the unique ones require that extra help, and it, it's hard to outsource that. So with that, do I have a motion? Actually, um, let me, let me ask, uh, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Wiley, did you have any comment on this?
Uh, not at this time, but I agree with what you just said about, uh, not having to contract out if we can have quality people in.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I didn't mean to leave you out. Uh, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes. I just wanna say, uh, thank you very much for the report. And because we're gonna recover, recoup those funds, it's like a return on investment. So what we put out, we're gonna get it back. So with that, I would like to move.
You wanna make a motion? So you make the motion? Have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts. Vice Mayor Wiley.
Yes.
Carley.
Yes. Moving on to item 9B, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item before you is a discussion or a study session on the possibility of digital freeway billboards. We have Noah Rumbow and Aaron Morris from our Community Development Department to make presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, members of the public. Tonight's presentation is on a study session for digital freeway billboards, specifically the existing Vacaville context, some key considerations about digital freeway billboards, and council's desires and direction for next steps. As for some background, there are approximately 16 existing billboard structures in Vacaville along I-80, 10 of which are located within city limits, and four of which are located outside the city limits, but within the northeast growth area. And so they may be annexed into the city at a later time. Approximately 155,000 to 209,000 vehicles travel on I-80 on an average day, according to the Caltrans Traffic Data Census Program. The city currently has two existing digital freeway billboards, one at the Vacaville Auto Mall and another at Nutri Village. And in 2015, the Vacaville sign ordinance was amended in order to prohibit digital freeway billboards. Knowing that digital freeway billboards are not allowed under the current city's municipal code, in March of this year, Clear Channel Outdoor submitted an application to convert one of their existing static billboard structures into a digital freeway billboard. This billboard is located along Eastbound I-80, heading towards Sacramento, just north of Kill Kenny Road, past Leisure Town Road. This new digital freeway billboard conversion is currently prohibited under our current sign ordinance. And so staff developed the study session in order to receive direction from City Council as to how they wanna proceed with this major policy decision. The city has an existing legal framework in regards to signage and digital billboards. In 1999, the city adopted the Gateway's Master Plan, which deemed billboards as an unattractive feature and established a policy, uh, to encourage the removal of existing billboards and to prohibit any new billboards. With the new general plan in 2015, there was an action that requires the city to amend the city's municipal code and master plan to address billboard development in the northeast growth area. And in 2020, in 2015 and 2022, with our new Land Use and Development Code, uh, new billboards and digital signs were prohibited. However, the new Land Use and Development Code does allow for relocation agreements that are subject to City Council approval. This would allow for existing static billboards to be relocated to other parts of the city. There are some financial considerations that council can make in regards to whether or not to allow digital freeway billboards in Vacaville. The city currently has agreements with two sign operators, the Auto Mall Sign and the Nutri Village Sign. These agreements have a revenue trigger, you know, increases, um, following that. Fairfield, a new digital freeway billboard went up on Westbound I-80 near Red Top Road. Uh, because this is also city-owned property, the city is paid $156,000 a year in rent. In addition, um, 35% of annual base revenues that exceed that $156,000 base rent are also paid to the city. A different approach was observed in Roseville, where the city, uh, issued a request for proposals to solicit proposals from different billboard sign operators to maximize revenue. And so this, one of these billboards is located along I-80 near Douglas Boulevard. The city received an initial signing bonus of $25,000, a conditional signing bonus of $225,000 after the first few days of sign operation, and also receives annual rent from the sign operator of $380,000 with 2% annual escalations. The city also receives 45% of any billboard gross revenue that exceeds annual base rent. Staff also observes, uh, billboards in Benicia, Folsom, and Hayward, and these, these cities have billboards that share similar characteristics to signs in the aforementioned cities. Digital freeway billboards have the potential to offer a number of benefits for the city. They offer, uh, an additional revenue source that can, uh, be maximized through a competitive RFP process. Additionally, they can provide placemaking and help establish city identity by, uh, hosting the city logo and providing theming that synergizes with other city efforts, such as our biotech attraction efforts. They can also help connect with economic development by promoting, uh, city businesses and promoting business growth. And they can help to reduce excess billboards throughout the community, uh, through relocation agreements. For example, the city of Hayward negotiated a five-to-one, uh, billboard removal in order to establish one digital billboard in their jurisdiction. Other potential benefits include community advertisement, such as city events and education efforts. This is already done with our existing digital freeway billboards, uh, auto, at the Auto Mall and also in Nutri Village. It would also allow for, uh, public service announcements and Amber Alerts, which are allowed for free in Folsom and in Roseville. There are some potential issues or concerns that the council may also want to consider. These include impacts to aesthetics and transportation. All outdoor digital freeway billboard structures are subject to Caltrans, uh, permitting and approval, uh, in, in regards to the size, brightness, and location. Uh, and this is due to concerns that it may cause a visual distraction for traffic, uh, which may increase, or which may result in an increase to congestion and/or collisions. There are also regulations as to limitations on content, as cities can only regulate non-communicative aspects of the sign, so the design, time, place, manner. Um, and this is in regards to free speech regulations in the Constitution. Additionally, the city also does not have any development standards for digital freeway billboards. And so those standards will need to be developed as part of a more robust research and public outreach process. The city of Folsom does have some development standards, just as an example. And so tonight's staff is seeking direction from the City Council as to next steps. Uh, some next steps are laid out on the screen here. For, uh, one possible option is to keep the sign code as it is and to continue the prohibition of new and converted digital freeway billboards and to decline the current proposal from Clear Channel. Alternatively, the council can make comprehensive amendments to the sign code by putting the application from Clear Channel on pause and preparing a comprehensive analysis and guidelines for new digital freeway billboards in Vacaville. Or the council could also move forward with, with Clear Channel's application and process their billboard freeway sign conversion and also prepare a comprehensive analysis and guidelines. Of course, the council is also welcome to modify and/or propose alternative options if they so choose. And so that concludes staff's presentation. We're happy to answer any questions. Um, in addition, we do have a representative from Clear Channel here today. What a presentation, if the mayor would like to, here to ask, well.
Thank you for the presentation, and I'll go ahead and give the chance, uh, for, from Clear Channel to come forward.
Councilmembers, uh, my name is Dave McWalters. I'm with Clear Channel, and I, given the late hour and, uh, I think the staff's presentation, I'm, can answer any questions. Um, just wanna hit on the high points of our proposal is that it is a, um, a guaranteed revenue to the city, um, for the development, term of the development agreement. It is consistent with our relocation that we originally did. I actually originally did in 1999, where we removed the signs in, in the city of Vacaville. We'll be removing a, a sign to be consistent with the Relocation Act of 5412. And I will, um, we are also providing emergency messaging, as staff has said, along with community, um, community events as well. So any additional comments I can answer, uh, as well.
Thank you. Just, I'll start with a question. I noticed that there was a limitation on content because of, uh, free speech. Obviously, there's gotta be limitations on what can be published. Could you, could you?
Sure. Um, in a development agreement, we're able to work with the city, um, and regulate our, what the messages are in there. And we've done that consistently throughout our development agreements through California and throughout the country. So, um, there'll be restrictions on adult-themed content, cannabis advertising, things like that, that we don't do as a company. Um, so there'll be those types of restrictions in the development agreement itself.
All right. For now, I'm, Vice Mayor Wiley, did you have any questions at this point?
No, I do not at this point. Thanks.
Open it up to the public for comments, so thank you. Saying no public comment on this item, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Just for clarification, can you go back to the slide that, um, provides the three potential outcomes? Was there any, was there any additional information assessed as far as? If I look at, uh, item or option B or option C, both of them are prepare comprehensive analysis and guidelines. I don't wanna assume anything, but is this directed at potential revenue? Models, um, all the different things that would go with an amendment change?
So we, we wanted to set a fairly broad set of options up there because ultimately, really, it depends on where you wanna go with this. But, you know, under option one, clearly that's, you don't, you're not interested in doing this, direct staff to stand down, and, and no, thank you. Um, option C is really to move forward with the specific proposal that Clear Channel is making, which is a $50,000 a year payment for the privilege of installing the digital billboard. And that would then lead us to having to, obviously, change our zoning regulations and kinda go down that path. I think B, sort of implied in B, is that you would wanna take a broader approach to, um, looking at digital billboards, and that could include further research about options, possibly an RFP and a competitive process for potentially selecting someone to, um, install digital billboards here. So C, B is probably the, the broadest of, of the options we've placed in front of you, and it, it sort of implies a competitive process.
And then C is one where there is the application. Now, is there, as far as the application goes, is it a completed application in the sense there's terms to it? Or is there, is there options? Cause you're showing different, uh, payment schedules from other cities. Has any of that been discussed?
We, we've shared with Clear Channel our staff report, um, and we were clear that we were doing, um, research. Their initial offer, which came in with their application, which is clear, they came up with an initial offer, is $50,000 a year. So should the council wish us to explore with them whether they're willing to offer more in sort of an exclusive negotiation? That's sort of what C is about, is moving forward with the one company to proceed with their application, and probably some negotiations would follow. But option B would be more about actually, the, the more of the Roseville model, which involves, um, the city taking the lead on it. It's really not a developer-funded thing at this point. It would be, um, issuing an RFP, getting proposals from the different sign companies, and being able to bring to council, um, more options, which could be more revenue.
Okay. And how many signs currently, um, within the city limits of Vacaville are owned by Clear Channel?
Limits, we have the three structures that we relocated, that's it. We removed all the other ones outside of, just outside of the city. Your event influencers, another three local structures as well, one of which we are planning on taking down. So, um, the RFP process, um, allows for a city to actually grow the number of, we're talking about just changing the technology on one structure, uh, to digital that provides various applications, emergency messaging capabilities, more opportunities for local, local advertisers, as well as community events. So it's, we are restricted only to the, being able to convert one of those signs out there because of the distance, um, signs that are required with the state. So, um, we're talking about just changing one structure as-is and turning it to digital technology. Not increasing the number throughout the city.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. So I heard you correctly. You did solicit applications.
No, we, we received one application from Clear Channel, and in order to prepare this study session to get council direction, we did, um, actually, this, this gentleman did a tremendous amount of research contacting cities all over the Bay Area and Sacramento Valley to pull out information about the deals they got, um, and, and really to assemble this study session for the council.
And then, um, the billboard, the digital billboard we have now by the Auto Mall, it was initial, I know the history with it. Uh, who, who, who has ownership of that now? Did they turn it over to the city? Does the, doesn't the city operate that billboard now?
That's a privately-owned billboard.
It is ours.
Oh, it's privately.
Oh, it's privately-owned. However, you have access to it, to operate it?
I can insist. Well, there's a development agreement between the city and the owner of that billboard that sets forth, for example, that if it makes a certain amount of money, we get a share of the, of the profits, if you will. And as part of the development agreement, we get to put certain messages on it. So it's because of the development agreement that allowed the billboard, um, gives the city certain, um, benefits.
Okay. All right. Thank you. When you were doing your research, are there many other companies that offer this service, digital tool billboarding? Did you pay attention to who was servicing the communities?
Yeah, there, there are a number of companies that operate billboards. There's a lot that reoccur throughout different communities. And so there are like, like main three, but there are a number of operators.
Okay. And with that, among the three, I'm not trying to push you to the side or anything, among the three, again, during your data, data gathering, did you notice which one was providing the largest return to the city?
I would say that it depends on the individual agreement negotiated between each company and the city. There's different factors involved for each city in terms of what they, what they're looking for and the context in regards to the sign.
Okay.
And so that influences the, the different terms that the city gets.
Would that be something that we would need to look at? And if we were to ask staff, the city manager, to go forward tonight to establish, establish guidelines or what we would like to see? Well, first of all, we have to decide on whether we want to go forward with digital billboard.
Clearly, right.
And then secondly?
And this is an opportunity to not only, I mean, if you have any more questions. And Jason, sorry, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
We'll do that and then we'll discuss it. Because I think it comes down to, if we're going to give feedback as far as what we're looking, that's going to require us to have a discussion.
Okay.
So Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, so maybe I missed it, but is the current billboard on city land or is that private land that's on right now? On private, it's on agricultural land out there?
Be at some commercial, and it is on private property.
Okay. Then kind of going back to the, the content thing, I know we can't limit.
Sure.
Like, what's said, can we limit the geographic area? Like, for example, we don't want to advertise for Fairfield Car Dealership when we have Vacaville car dealerships. Can we?
Absolutely. Also, those things are a part of a development agreement.
Okay, so it can be geographically tied.
Yes, that's the nice thing about a development agreement is that.
Okay. Yeah, I was unsure if that fell under the content restriction.
The signs that are out there right now, we can put anything up, but we don't, obviously. We advertise local as well as national businesses. But the, the sign agreement that we're talking about here would have restrictions of that nature. In addition to the payment, that would be guaranteed each year. It's not based upon a revenue share, it's based upon a guarantee. So you will be receiving it from the, the day it starts.
Okay. And do you have any other electronic billboards in like the Jason says, like Fairfield or Dixon?
Yes, we do. We actually built the one, we worked with the city and Caltrans on relocating three, taking down three signs in the city of Fairview. We put two back up. And one of them is the digital, and we actually paid the same fee that we're paying, or offering to pay the city of Vacaville the same fee. So we did that in Fairfield. We have them in Sacramento. We have them throughout the Bay Area. Actually, we have in Northern California about 75 digital signs.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
One of the things I was reading in the analysis was the time the average driver in the study, I think it was Caltrans, it was 1.3 seconds that it would distract the driver. So there wasn't a significant danger if I had a digital billboard or stagnant billboard. But one thing that wasn't covered so far is the economic portion of the environmental impact. So the weight in the, the weight of the vinyl used for the traditional old-school billboards is like 150, 200 pounds, and it's a lot of waste. So that is something that's also environmentally friendly to transition from classic billboards that shift out and that waste is just put into our dumps as opposed to digital billboard that has a better environmental impact. But that's something that we also need to consider. It's a lot of waste of like having that vinyl printed and wasted just for dollars.
I just, some, some comments that go along with this. I do agree with, what are the impacts? Appears that previous councils, at least at the time as technology was advancing, was against digital billboard signs. I think they, they provide a real community benefit. I think I, I heard you say, where do you advertise and can that be in an agreement? Personally, I'd like to not see a digital billboard ad that is trying to recruit government positions from outside agencies in our own community, but I'm just selfish here. I actually, I support the, the use of digital billboard, billboards in the sense that it's far more convenient and yet safety is a concern. And that would be one of the, the areas that I would want to make sure that whether it's analysis and guidelines that would develop into a city policy of sorts. The, the lighting, the length of messaging, the use of it in the perspective of local advertising. If there ever was an opportunity for local advertising, it's going to be a billboard. I mean, I can imagine our branding, right? We're wanting people to stop in Vacaville to shop and to dine and to stay. And the opportunity for local vendors to actually individually advertise. I mean, this could be a real benefit. Who has access to this? I mean, I know we've seen the revolution of advertising in movie theaters where you, you show up and all the locals are, all the local businesses are advertised. And so I support the use of digital media. We're far, farther along today with our digital phones and everything than we were probably when those decisions were made. And not saying those, those decisions weren't, were wrong, it's just that we're in a different time. So I do support it. I, in, in some discussions I've had, one of the things that is important to me is, is if there is the ability to not have a free-for-all, we're already doing business with, with Clear Channel and vendors as such. The goal is if the more we can minimize the number of signs and maximize the actual amount of utilization and return for the city as well. That's something that I would certainly want to make sure is in our, in our policy or in our agreements. And then I also believe that a great way to return an investment of value is, this is signage on the freeway. Sometimes we complain about the freeway going through our town, especially when it's heavy traffic. But the benefit is, is when they stop, they, people are looking for a place to eat and I would like to see, and it would be my recommendation, that any, any revenue that's generated out of this actually helps to pay for programs that can beautify our, our corridor, not just to a general fund, but to say, if we're going to do this, let's actually create a, you know, a, a benefit to this that says, okay, there's revenue coming in and how can we use it when we're always asked in, in using our, our funding to beautify the corridor, which creates a greater attraction for not only the quality of the way Vacaville appears, but also a nice amenity to drive through Vacaville. We're trying to grow our economy. We want it to look a certain way. We don't really have a funding source for it per se, but dedicate a funding source out of, out of revenues like this. Those are my thoughts. Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you. I like your thoughts. You had mentioned, what's your, position on private property. Do we have, does the city have property along IAD corridor that we can place it, have it placed on city property?
We, we haven't identified specific sites, but when we did, did our research, one model, again, it's the Roseville model, and there's a couple other cities that did this. As part of developing their public policy and their ordinances around this, they require that the developer, the billboard developer acquire an easement that benefits the city on the private property, and then the city charges the rent from there. So that's the model Benicia used. It's also the model that Roseville used. And those are two examples of cities that are receiving a lot of revenue, but it's not like, I think Benicia might have been their land. Roseville definitely wasn't. In Roseville's case, they required it be on their land, and then they charge a lot of rent, and then that money goes back into their general fund.
Okay. And then would we, no, that would go with guidelines and analysis. That's it.
Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Ritchie?
Thanks so much. I really appreciate your comments about trying to find other mechanisms for funding to help, kind of like a way we can kind of benefit the city by having, you know, make sure it be a priority for, you know, the average, I think the average sign is probably, the average digital sign, maybe it was a 10 seconds and they lapse? Or is it 10 seconds or every six seconds?
It's, the state of California requires four seconds. We are modeled based upon eight, which is a 64-second loop. So every eight seconds, it changes. As the, as it gets darker outside, the sign actually gets darker with it. So less light and less electricity is used at night than it is during the day. So it corrects every, the ambient light is, or the, the structure itself is actually adjusted to the ambient light. So these signs actually work on about 70 amps of electricity. So they've come down tremendously. And the actual billboard that's out there right now uses about the same amount.
So yeah, it was more, it wasn't really about light pollution, it's more about how many average companies can market in their, at a 60-second interval and on the eight-second kind of like lapse. A part of the preparing comprehensive guidelines and the funding mechanism could be to find a way to have priority to, out of that 60-second cycle, eight seconds per company, a certain percentage of the companies would be in a geographic location of Vacaville. So we can have 95% of the eight-second, 60-second clips being from companies outside of Vacaville. We need to make sure that we want to have a certain goal of how many companies will be able to be a 20, 40% of the companies that are on the billboard are from the region or at least have the first opportunity to opt out. So make sure when, like our local companies don't get drowned out by bigger companies that can afford a market. I think that really helps, will help the small businesses and Vacaville businesses thrive by making sure that, oh God, well Budweiser, they're within, they're around here. So they can afford to take 10 spots out of those eight-second and drowned out small Vacaville companies. So I think those things we can work on the comprehensive analysis and guidelines and try to use that to really, really take what the mayor was saying, finding a funding mechanism to truly beautify our on-ramp or city. But I think I'm, I'm excited about it, so.
Thank you. So question to staff on this then. If, if the council takes action, you're given some general latitude and directions. But if we were to move forward with the conversion of their existing sign, they already, they're already in an agreement with where they're at. The preparation for comprehensive analysis and guidelines, does that apply to their, their application?
It would, but it would be comprehensive in that it would address the entire city. So it would set up policy and regulations for other potential conversion requests.
So, so a, a motion on item C would, would indicate, yes, there's, there's a majority agreement from the council, yet at the same time that there's factors that are not yet completely identified, cost analysis structure, the things we're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay. Right. Well, I don't see any other lights on the, on the dice. Do I have a motion? Well, there's no motion. This is, you receive information, sorry about that. Do you think you have clear understanding?
I think we have a starting point. I'm looking at the city manager to see if he, oh, we may, we may need a little more clarity.
It was just not quite enough, was it? You're, you're looking for, at least on, there needs to be.
I think it would be helpful, and especially in light of the fact, a good question was brought up about, you know, the number of different billboard companies that we have within our boundaries. And because you have multiple, I think, you know, just, just from my years of experience doing this sort of thing, it might be advantageous to consider what the, the bigger picture looks like in terms of these regulations as they apply to a citywide perspective as opposed to just an individual at this point in time. It's not to say that we can't end up working with Clear Channel and their request, but I think to give the council the benefit of all the different options that could exist out there, because you do have multiple providers out there, that it would be advantageous to take a look at that. And so I think clarification in that regard, whether we're looking at one or we're looking citywide, I think would be valuable for, for staff to move forward with the next steps.
And maybe I'm, I may have misunderstood in that because I personally think it's worthy of looking at the entire city as far as what we're doing. We're in a different era than when we started, when it was the code that said it's all banned. I appreciate a company that's wanting to modernize, and you've modernized in other places, but how do we also take that, but really look at the broader perspective and come back to council so that we, so that we forward? But that's just, that's just my views of it. Is that clear?
I had just a couple comments if I can jump in there too.
Yes, you can.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate this discussion because there is a lot to figure out, and it's important that we do it right. Because apparently, if we have two digital signs now that was supposed to provide revenue, but they're really not, then we need to figure out exactly making this the right decision. I do really appreciate the local emphasis, and I also do think it's great that this plan or with this company we're talking to right now will convert a static sign to, you know, a digital sign, and that would be one less, you know, static sign sitting there. So I, since you hadn't called on me, I just wanted to jump in to say that. So thanks.
Yeah, and I would, you know, thank you, Vice Mayor. That just brings up, yeah, that's, that's, it's on, it's on the notice, it's on the notice, and that was at the beginning. So what I would say is, is the, the feedback, you're disrupting the meeting, okay? I'm just going to ask you, I'm just going to ask you, we can talk later. That is the Vice Mayor, and she is operating, she, she is at home for personal reasons, and it's been properly noticed on this meeting, so that's why she's calling in. Meeting tonight, yeah. Yeah. Sorry for that, but please just withhold any other disruption. What I would say is, is I personally like the fact that we're doing business with a company. And so the idea of doing a broader expansion also needs to, to me, look at, if there was the concept of RFPs out there, it should, it should consider the value of people that we're already doing business with and how to help them because conversion helps us. Does that help? Yeah. All right. So that should be enough feedback. Thank you. I wanted to make sure. So appreciate the presentation, and hopefully what we can do is, do you have a timeline on what that, what that might look like?
We're going to need to huddle up, but through the city manager, we'll be able to provide some timeline information.
He has nothing else to do, I'm sure.
Exactly.
It's been a long night. At this point, I believe we are moving into a final stretch. Look at that. No more presentations. Item 10 reports to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So I just had two real quick notices for the community. First one, there was a discussion brought up during Business from the Floor related to the battery storage project. Just want to, it was mentioned during that from a member of the public that we are in fact having a public meeting on this particular project. It is going to be held Thursday, September 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Solano Community College. They will be meeting in their large auditorium room. We will have plenty of signage out front to direct stat, to direct any member of the public who's interested in learning about that particular project. If you'd like to submit your questions ahead of time or get more information about the project, you can visit our website here, which is cityofvacaville.gov/batterystorage, and you can get all the information about that. Just real quickly to point out, the, the same member that mentioned about that particular meeting and the desire to have all the different regulatory agencies involved and present, that will in fact happen, but at a later date. Not necessarily a large public meeting, but this meeting is really a kickoff meeting to describe what the process is, what the project is, hear from the developers about their project, as well as from city staff to tell you what the process is and how this project will go through lots of environmental review and analysis by all those different agencies that were mentioned, and, and then some. And so there will be a very in-depth sequel process to evaluate it, and that will be part of the, the public review process. So I would encourage people who are interested in that to, to check out our website and attend the meeting.
And real quick, just so that there's further clarification, because there were a lot of people that came tonight, the structure of a meeting. Structure of a meeting is this is the time for us to share this information, not during business from the floor. But also people who choose to weigh in, don't have to come to the council meeting. They can email and have the information attached. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so those comments come to all council through the email process. So if people want to voice their concerns, you can always send an email and it becomes part of, of the record that we consider. We, we get the, the notifications usually, um, at the time of a council meeting. So encourage anyone who doesn't understand. And I think the last thing I would just say for clarity, because there was a lot of discussion, knowing that this is out there. Can you please just comment on that this is not, there, there's no agreement. This is exclusive negotiating rights.
Correct. So in that regard, we are, um, simply following through on the, um, agreement to explore the feasibility of this particular project in that particular city on property. It has many more stages to go through to, um, basically prove itself and that it will be a good neighbor. And so there's a lot of evaluation to occur and that will be vetted through many different opportunities for the public to, to provide input. The second item, just real quickly, uh, that I wanted to mention is, um, the city of Asheville is, is privileged to continue, uh, the Merry Men on Main legacy, beginning this November 28th, uh, this year. The city will be, um, organizing that event for the first time. But we are hopeful that after watching it be done for 40 amazing years, that we can continue to keep up the special, uh, event for our community. And so we'll be doing our very best, uh, as we move towards, uh, putting, uh, that event together. We will be putting a call out to vendors and providing other event details, um, uh, about that particular project as we move forward with it. I would encourage anybody that's interested in that or participating to go to the cityofacaville.gov page backslash Merry Men on Main for more details and keep an eye on that because again, we hope to, uh, bring that event, uh, very successfully to, to our community, November 28th. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, reports of city council. I see an item A. Is it still on there?
Yes. And if I need to provide a little bit of clarification, this is simply in preparation for the League of California Cities Conference this September, um, that we need to have the council appoint a voting delegate, um, that will represent the, the city, um, during their legislative, uh, sessions.
And that can be done at a later date, not tonight?
Actually, we need to have it submitted by, uh, August 28th.
Okay. So that would also help for those who are attending, I would, I would presume, or can you vote? I'm just saying, is there, so which one are we talking about here?
The, the September 20th meeting, uh, that's in Sacramento.
Right.
And, and so obviously it would be valuable to have someone that is planning on attending that meeting to be appointed by the council to be the voting delegate to represent back of all of those meetings.
Well, and with that, I know that I'm attending. You're attending.
I'll be there presenting.
You're presenting. And I think, uh, was, I think Silva was as well. I don't know if anyone else. Is there a process that you need or is it just by selection?
Councilmember Silva was last year's, uh, representative delegate. So I would, you know, suggest that, you know, either one of you step up. That would be fantastic.
Well, I, I plan, we all plan on attending and I don't mind being the delegate this year unless somebody else wants, has a burning desire to do it. Another burning desire.
Be there at 3:00 in the morning.
Brother student. Well, no, I'm just saying, if, if you've been on the council longer, if you want to, if you, you've been there, so.
Burning desire.
No burning desire. I used the wrong words there. All right.
So I nominate, uh, Mayor Carley to be our delegated.
I'll second.
All right. Well, I guess that takes a roll call. I forgot to Vice Mayor Wiley, but she wasn't attending, I don't believe. All right. So, but we still have to do a roll call because.
Councilmember Richie. Member Chapman. Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Carley.
Yes. All right. So I'll be that delegate.
I will.
That's right. All right. So moving on with the rest of reports of city council. Anyone have anything to share?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. Um, hearing some of the comments today from those who spoke before us. I would like to ask if we could have cooling and warming center placed on an agenda for discussion. And also the, the gentleman that provided us with, um, figures as to the amount of money that had been, uh, provided to Vallejo and Fairfield and the smaller sum that we received. Was that from the, um, group, uh, that?
JPA.
JPA. And the funds that, um, or stated were coming in and they were going to be looking at the big picture and decide where the money was going to go at that time. Do you think that was the money that he was speaking of today?
So those specific funds were ARPA funds that were allocated to the county. And the county was looking for projects and councilmember Roberts was, you know, part of the JPA at that time. And, and there was lots of discussion at the JPA level about what projects were ready. The one, the, the dollar amount that they referenced for Vacaville was My Friend's House. And, and so that was a local organization that was, um, helping, uh, homeless students. And so, but, uh, the other two projects that were referenced were, um, for Vallejo and Fairfield that had, uh, larger projects, um, ready because they had been preparing for that due to their higher, you know, um, their higher levels of homelessness.
Of need. Yes. Okay. So with that, this is why I would like to have us, um, put cooling warming center and a discussion on our homeless population on the agenda at a future meeting.
As far as, uh, having a discussion about, I do, are we planning on having a discussion this, in, in the coming meetings? Cause that.
So at the August 9th special meeting, we talked about, um, the, the, our representatives at the JPA, councilmember Roberts and councilmember Stockton come back with an update on the activities that are going on with the JPA and the sub, the larger subject of homelessness. With regards to the discussions specifically to cooling and, and warming centers, um, that could certainly be, you know, part of it. Um, I know that we're currently awaiting on the, the county EOP, um, to, to come in because that certainly plays a part in, in that big piece as well. So I think if I'm not mistaken, councilmember Roberts, the, the timing that you were looking at, that we were talking about was, you know, October, November, because that's when the JPA board will have a better idea of their strategic plan and, and the, uh, kind of the objectives for the region as a whole, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. So we just, I was on the ad hoc, uh, committee for the strategic planning for the JPA. And so we just kind of got most of it together and that's actually going to be discussing that this Thursday in Fairfield up at the, uh, event center at the courthouse. And so, yeah, hopefully in September, October, latest November, we should have a solid plan on that. And for the warming centers, uh, cause cooling centers, we kind of figured out with our own EOP how that was handled. For the warming centers, because that's an overnight thing, a lot of that relies on the county's emergency operations plan from the public health and social services aspect of it. So we don't, it'd be difficult to do something now that when the county hasn't even figured out what they're doing. Cause we don't want to, yeah, fight each other, fight each other on that aspect.
Well, it may be.
I'm sorry.
Okay. It may be helpful if the community is aware of the work that's being done, uh, with the JPA.
I think that's, that's the reason for bringing that discussion back.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah. We're trying to finish up the strategic plan because without that, we don't really have too much to report until we figure out how the county or the regions handling it. And then that's where I'm planning on bringing it back at, with an actual formal update to the entire council with what's happening.
All right.
Cause we're still in the formative stages of that organization.
So can you keep us abreast of when, um, when that will be finalized, the strategic plan? And maybe we can put it on the agenda right after the approval?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll work with councilmember Roberts and Stockton. And, um, I think perhaps during this particular point of the agenda, when we get the council as they're working with the JPA, they can give you, you know, periodic updates. And then once they get to that point where they're comfortable that they have some substantive information to present, we'll absolutely put that on the next available agenda to do a presentation for the, the entire council and the community.
Would appreciate that. Yes.
And I agree. It's, this is a, an issue that is not going away. That's why we're in the JP, the JPA and it, that's what we discussed during the special meeting. And so I think if we can just have that more comprehensive conversation at the time and we get the feedback so that we're making informed decisions.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilmember Roberts. Oh, no, sorry. You're not done.
I'm not done.
All right.
I'm not done.
I retract.
Sorry.
I'll continue. Sorry.
Thank you. About how many people, uh, don't, are triple digits, um, utilize the, the cooling center? And I know it was the library and the three outs, uh, so how is that working for, uh, unsheltered?
If I'm not mistaken, we had, uh, three such events that met the criteria to open those facilities up. And all combined, we had less than five.
Less than five at each one?
Total.
Total.
One to two customers.
So are we getting the information out? Are we, we are getting it out there?
Okay. Uh, now councilmember Roberts.
Yeah. So one pretty quick update, you know, with a tailor for the, the farmer's market. They moved it to the little triangle block downtown is, uh, I just had me walking around there with my dogs a little bit. Went checked out the very end of it is, uh, pretty successful. Saw a lot of vendors, uh, yeah. Like was mentioned earlier, I think it's maybe Blake that brought it up, that, that's more people I've seen downtown on a Saturday morning than I have in a long time. Although there was a mishap of closing down most of the main street when that wasn't originally planned. So hopefully we can get that worked out for the next time. Um, yeah, that was a pretty good thing. And, um, yeah, it's a quick update. I'll do a quick little JPA update was that the, for the, My Friend's House, councilmember Stockton, I had the opportunity to put in for bigger projects like a navigation center or whatever else we want to work with. But we chose something that is feasible because if we're only asking for $238,000, the county is like, yes, go ahead. Versus battling it out with Vallejo and Fairfield where we might not get anything if we ask for a couple million dollars. So we chose a project that we knew would probably get approved. And that is already a successful running program in the city. And that would help them out substantially by just being able to purchase that house outright. And that way they don't have any, it reduces their operating costs. So just make that program even better. So we chose a very specific, uh, feasible project that we knew would get approved by the county.
Take care of the foster children anyway. Should have gone something else. No, I'm listening with you.
Vice Mayor Wiley, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. Um, I was also going to bring up the heating and cooling center when it was in discussion a while ago with councilmember Chapman. Because I do believe members of the group that spoke have been asking to have that on the agenda for a long time. And I was happy at our strategic meeting to hear the update on the JPA. But, um, it's kind of like down the road, maybe in September, maybe October, maybe November. And it will be cold during some of those times. And we need to have, you know, a cooling center, a warming center rather than just bring it to the council at that time. So I do really want us to stress, let's bring that back as soon as possible. Because the people that are waiting that spoke tonight can't help until we have a united front and have a plan. And that's the frustration, I think, that, that we heard tonight among, you know, the people that were speaking and how we can best address the needs of those people that are on the street and without housing. Then the other thing is just, you know, school has started, so it's so important for everyone with the increased traffic and so many people driving their kids to school because there's not maybe a neighbor at school that they have to really work with traffic issues and be patient. And in our consent items, we did have, you know, a pedestrian crosswalk in a couple of places on Alamo. And that's something that I've been asking, you know, to be considered a nut tree for, you know, since I've been on council because so many of the residents here in Vacaville, in district six are concerned with the safety of crossing a busy street like Nut Tree. So just wanted to put in a plug for pedestrian crossing, uh, sometime in the future. And, um, just be another item was the, the speed limit. And so we did approve the reducing the speed and abandoned from 55 to 45, um, down around the roundabout, roundabout, and when it changes from Fairfield to Vacaville. So I just want to encourage people to drive reasonably and particularly with that new three-way stop. I have been happy. People have said, well, we don't see patrol people, no one stopping people. Just like in the past two weeks, I've seen people stopped on Peabody Road in Vacaville. Like I've seen people stop twice and I've seen the patrolman there. So I do appreciate the patrol for our police department who are actively trying to help remind the drivers to slow down to the posted speed limit. So, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to call in during the medical issue that was in my household this week. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Roberts, you probably had continuation comment on that, did you not?
Yeah. Just a quick thing, because it popped in my head, uh, before I forget and give fire enough leeway. Um, when we do bring back the cooling and warming center, uh, discussion, can you guys possibly pull the EMS data for hypo and hypothermic events that require transport to a hospital? Uh, that way we can see how many heat and cold injuries we actually have within our city to justify the hours that we may need. Thank you.
Councilmember Richie.
Thank you so much. Um, I, I don't want to speak for the whole council, but I'll try to be brief. Name is, my voice not make it, but, um, you know, this is, I think, have been our second meeting. We've had a very passionate, um, crowd full of the free, the first amendment. And I just make sure that our lack of talking and public comments, I mean, it's our council comments at the end, does not reflect our passion on either side of the conversation. I, I, I've spoken to one of the council member and I'm personally going to wait to make my comments when it's agendized. I'm not going to go and talk and talk in council comments now. I'm going to wait till it's agendized. Start working me in front of everybody with the decision that's made, we can really articulate our passion. I understand the passion. I understand, um, the feeling of, we're, we're all here. We all care with everyone in the city. I don't think anyone up here has any feelings ill will towards one group or another. I mean, I'm, my personal life, I mean, I'm a six and four black man. My kids are black Jews. I mean, I think I know a little bit about not feeling normal for my kids. So I'm a very strong man of faith. So there's, everyone has this kind of jumble pot of feelings, emotions that we're going, we're going to go articulate. But the fact that our fellow council members and our mayor have not given a lengthy conversation does not, and not represent our passion towards our, our, our personal feelings on the message. I just, it's frustrating where people think, oh, we're not saying anything. We don't care. But that's so far from the truth. We, we, I think we all really care. And but it's just something, it's, it's a big conversation and we're waiting for it to get agendized to be interesting accordingly. When it comes to schools, my, I know myself and the mayor had a short conversation before, tried to have a longer one. But, you know, we realized the last history of, of Vacaville, city of Vacaville with the school districts. Now we have multiple school districts. We need to get together. We need to huddle up. And, and the mayor, we had a short conversation. We understand that. We understand that that's not our role. We don't build schools, but we've got to find a way to work with the school system in a better and more inclusive way. with the school system in a better and more inclusive way. Busing, I mean, having kids ride buses, we can't, the city doesn't make, doesn't do buses. But we need to try to put our influence to really motivate the school system. But, and the mayor, we had a short conversation, so elaborating a lot. But this isn't something that hasn't gone unnoticed. Like we're going to try to make sure, be men of fences and bring Travis Vacaville and our public school systems and private schools and charters together to make sure everybody in Vacaville has an amazing experience and education and do what we can to motivate private businesses to pay more, developers to pay more. We need to work together, champion the bond, just help push it over the top. You know, complaining doesn't get stuff done. Action does. The bond is, is what is going to put dollars in the coffer. And we need people to be as passionate about coming here and complaining to us as going to the city at the. You guys need to spend much time at the school district meetings as you do here and realize that you can yell as loud as you want in the woods, but no one's going to hear you to make a difference. So make sure you guys educate yourself on where to be at the right place, right time to get the best results in life. Because complaining to us is great, but you need to make sure you're, you're aiming at the right person. You know, there, there's amazing people at the school district. And if you guys calmly share your passions, it's going to show them that we, that bond has life. We can work together. So I just, I just, I don't want to go unspoken that our passion for education, even though we can't affect education, is that that's, we all care greatly about our school. And we have a teacher, retired teacher, and we have so much passion. My mom did 42 years of special education. We are, we all have passion for education in schools. But we can't build a school. But we're going to do what we can as the city to work with the school districts to really understand that we got to get this done. So I, I just, between that issue and schools, our lack of conversation doesn't mean we don't care. So that's my kind of comments.
Thank you. And I'll just add in closing that some of the things that we heard tonight in the agenda items, especially in the issue of development, schools. I'm, I know I'm, I'm speaking for myself, but I know I don't, I'm not alone on this. You can't have a school if you don't have the land. And if I could build a school, I would. If I could, I mean, there are other cities around the country where the city council is the, facto, they run the schools. It's like, well, that would be really easy because I think one of the things that we're realizing is, is we've had failed bonds and we're not on the school board. But we have just as much ability to communicate with the public and with elected officials on the school board to help each other understand what each other's issues are. And as I see it, we have neighborhoods that grow and then there's a promise of a school or there's a location of a school. And so this really demonstrates the need to lean in. You said that there's a lot of, there's a lot of educator, educators on this council. But if, and I don't want to dive into a bond, but the future has to be, we can't be building neighborhoods without ensuring there is a school. And so since we can't, we have to make sure that we have the right relationships and influence and understanding so that we work with them in the community so we achieve the common goal. And that is, is to have a vibrant community. You have to have a neighborhood. And at some point after 30 years, you got to build a school. How do we get there? Right? So I appreciate the comments. And, and again, I've received a lot of emails on, and listened and heard from a lot of constituents on the issue. And these are passionate issues from Business from the Floor. And, and first and foremost, I just, I, I want to say that I'm very careful about ensuring the right to the First Amendment. We do have policies in place, but my, my former experience of 32 years in protecting the right of, of free speech also understands that I too have been called every name that's out there that's offensive. And so I don't want to say that I understand it more, but I do understand the difference between a hate crime, offensive speech and protected speech. And they are widely debated and there's, there's thoughts around this. But that's separate from how this makes a, a community feel. And my hope and my desire in all this is, is that the community can understand that this council cares for people and the, the well-being of people, which is why even in the proclamation, it's valuing the rights of individuals. And I spent my entire career defending the rights of individuals and protecting their rights to be different and feel different than me and not be personal about it. So it's very personal to me on how to ensure that we, we can make decisions as a council for the, for the greater good of an entire community on all of the issues that we do. And I appreciate this council and, and how we've worked well together and are thoughtful on these issues. And with that, that's, that's the last I have to say on that matter. I, I simply hope that people realize that we are judged by our, we, we want to be judged by our intentions, but we don't always see eye to eye on issues. And that's the whole challenge that we're facing right now. And, and I continue to hear from everyone and I'm sure everyone on this council is hearing from a lot of people. And that, again, it's been agenda, it, it will come to an agenda item. I'm speaking with the city manager on that, on, on when and how that will happen. But it's, it's, I mean, you brought it up and we all voted on it. So it's coming. At that, at this point, we're going to go in a closed session. We have two items. There'll be nothing to report out tonight. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks. Good night, Vacaville.